Hold your not on, okay? Hold up. We'll call the Monday, March 16th, 2020 Select's meeting to order. We all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Residents comment, I don't think we have any. Approve the warrants. Mike, do you have that?
Sure, I can read those.
I don't think I have that here.
Motion to approve payroll warrant 20-37 in the amount of $171,840.51.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Unanimous.
Motion to approve bill warrant number 20-37 in the amount of $1,320,651.39. And the breakdown is town, $123,208.63. Water and sewer, $58,617.20. Payroll withholding, $21,562.76. Health insurance, $38,025.27. Light bills, $119,708.41. Branches revolving, $27,630.37. Kentucky assessment, $822,41.75. And Whittier assessment, $109,857.
We have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? None? All in favor? Unanimous. Next, approval of minutes for February 18th, 2020.
I've reviewed the minutes, I move favorable.
Second.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? None? All in favor?
Abstained.
Yeah, you weren't there.
Three in favor, one abstention. Motion carries. Appointments. Appointment of Heather Torres, 8 Briscoe Road, Groveland, to the position of part-time water and sewer administrative assistant effective March 23rd, 2020. This position is up to 19 hours a week, starting rate of $18 an hour. Is Heather here?
I am, yes.
Why don't you step up to the podium?
And Colin, the superintendent is here as well.
And Colin is here. Want you just fill us in about yourself?
My name's Heather.
Just remember, there's probably 3 million people watching you, so don't be nervous.
I've been preparing for this all day. My name's Heather, I live in town, and I'm very excited to be working where I live. I moved up here a few years ago with my family, and that was one of the goals, is working for the community where I live, getting to know everybody. So I'm looking forward to this position.
Anybody got any questions, Laura? Mike?
I'm not used to the seating arrangements, so. No questions really, more of just comments. I did read through your resume. I did like that you have a lot of computer experience, especially QuickBooks and Microsoft Office, Google Docs, and a town accounting experience already. And you're a Salem State graduate, so. No, thank you, and thank you for coming on board, and thanks for being on the nation, I think that's gonna be pretty good.
Thank you.
Anybody, Bill?
Yeah, I'm also a Salem State graduate, and it's always nice to meet another alum. Wash Depot, Joel Beech is still there?
He is.
He is.
I'll have to ask him about you.
Yeah, we, I worked at Wash Depot for a while, so we. Yeah, it was quite a time. It's still over there on Pleasant Street?
They're on Summer Street now.
Summer Street, oh yeah, it's across from the train station.
Yes.
Yeah, 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 great. Thanks for going, stepping up. That's it.
She's well qualified for part-time, I'm wondering, um, is she going to become full-time? Is that what, I mean, this thing, I guess I should have had time to open last year's budget and look at it, but I did not, so I'm questioning, like, is she going to be in this building or that building? And this is not for you, Heather, because it's not, you're more than qualified for part-time, you're qualified for full-time. So I'm asking, what is the plan for this position?
Well, we do have an upcoming retirement.
Yeah, I wasn't on the board last year, Heather, just, you know, so I'm new as of the election in May, so I'm trying to catch up still.
So we're, in a very short time period, gonna be losing our office manager of 30-something years. So we're looking to get Heather to come on board, learn as much as she can from Pat, who is a wealth of knowledge. We think that Heather will come in, be able to do a good job, and learn, and help us.
The expectation would be that she would then be able to move to full-time, we just don't make that guarantee from the get-go. So that would be the ultimate goal, is to have someone train in the position and then be qualified to take a full-time position here.
If I may, Chairman, I'd like to follow up.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So for the Assessors' Office, we have a similar situation, and I saw that in their budget, they put the extra money in the manager's salary, they didn't create a separate position. So my only concern is that we're not gonna keep both positions, that we're going to have one position, right?
No, when we move, it's gonna be extremely beneficial for us to have the extra half-person. Right now, if myself or Patty is out, and the other one, if, so today Patty wasn't in, and I had to go out to a job site, so no one was in the office. When we're a standalone entity, I can't imagine that this would be a good conversation with you if you come to the water department to pay your bill and no one's there and the door's locked.
But you're not bonded there for collections, are you?
I mean, we're not there yet, so I don't know, that's a discussion that's happened, certainly not since I've been here.
I guess my concern is in the, and again, I apologize because of all the stuff that's been going on, and I'm a schoolteacher, so you can imagine what emails and everything have been like. Setting up for distance learning, I wanted to have the time to look at last year's budget to identify where this was being funded. Because I don't remember it.
It's a separate line item.
Yeah, we've always had a part-time service.
So we have a part-time built into your budget already?
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
So this is not a new position, it's just gone unfilled. So now that Pat's retirement is getting closer, they wanted to make sure they had a position that could go in there and.
Well, I totally support that, I'm 150% on board with that. I just want to make sure that Heather is here where the action is, learning about the collections under it all. And not off just answering phones, or, you know, where she really gets to know everybody in here and gets to know the kind of background that she has.
Yeah, we're not gonna stick her in a closet somewhere.
You might wanna steal her, I mean, whoops, I said that on camera, sorry. But she has a very good background, so, okay. So you still feel that you want a second part-time position because you moved to another building?
Yeah, I mean, I think the workload's there, and especially when we're by ourselves. No one wants to go banging on the door and not have anyone there, inevitably, it's going to happen.
If I may just add, so currently, they have the benefit of other offices in Town Hall, so if they're not there, you know, Colin can say, hey, I'm running out, my staff can take their water bill payments, people can come in, we can at least say, oh, they're closed for right now. They won't have any of that in another building. I would actually recommend that they have an additional person, just because even if they have one, someone else shouldn't be on a job, there shouldn't be one person alone in a building. I think having some redundancy, having a second person that can fill in for vacation time, personal time, et cetera, and then having someone else assist with the customers is a good thing to have, in my opinion.
So you want the collections to move out of here?
It's not my decision. I've had the conversation, I think we should move collections all into one office, but that's not my decision.
Okay.
Okay, I guess my questions are for a future date when all this kind of comes to pass, but I think she's really qualified and particularly lucky to get you in here.
Thank you.
This has come up before in the budget requests, that you, at some point, you were gonna be asking for a part-time person.
Yeah, I, I know I'm relatively new in this role, but I know, having been here for six years, I know it's been talked about prior to me.
Okay, anybody else got a question? I'll sit. We have a motion?
Motion to appoint Heather Torres of 8 Briscoe Road, Groveland, to position of part-time water and sewer administrative assistant, effective March 23rd, 2020. Position will be up to 19 hours per week at a starting rate of $18 per hour.
Seconded.
Second, moved and seconded, any other discussion? None? All in favor? Yes, unanimous.
Normally, we'd shake your hand, but, sorry.
I understand.
Yeah, distance.
Appointment of Paul, Paul DeCosta, Kingston, New Hampshire, to the position of Reserve Patrol Officer for probationary period, effective March 16th, 2020, through June 30th, 2020. We have a recommendation from the police chief on that.
And he is a reserve officer currently, I believe, in West Newbury, so he's already fully trained and would be ready to start right away.
He's not here. Any discussion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Paul DeCosta of Kingston, New Hampshire, to position of Reserve Police Officer for probationary period, effective March 16th, 2020, through June 30th, 2020.
I agree, a second?
Seconded.
Seconded, moved and seconded, any other discussion? None?
Yeah, just one quick thing. I know Chief isn't here, because he's on vacation, I think coming back early because of the situations, and he did say that Paul is a current reserve officer in West Newbury.
I believe it's West Newbury.
So, I mean, we've never had any question, or reason to question Jeff's appointments or anything, so I would assume that this would also be a good hire for the police department.
Yeah, I mean, it's been fully vetted, I can assure you that.
Well, I mean, he's already trained up and has been doing the reserve work, so I think it's good to have another fully trained reserve officer on staff.
Yes.
Does it?
Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Next, discussion and possible vote, COVID-19 coronavirus discussion.
So if I may, as you know, I sent the board a statement that I put out last night after the governor's discussion. At this time, I would like to recommend to the board that, starting tomorrow at 8:00 a.m., we close the town offices to the public. We are one of the only towns that are actually still open to the public. The library is only, the only one out of the 35 in their consortium that are open, and they have seen an influx in out-of-town patrons today. I don't think people are taking the sort of shelter-at-home seriously. And we can do a good job internally of keeping employees' distance, you know, we have one person per office, they can go about their daily work, managing phone calls and emails and things online. But it's really not fair to, I'll be honest, it's my office, Caitlin was dealing with customers all day, coming to the counter, and she had to get up and continue to interact with them, because excise bills were due last week, so folks are coming in with them late. I would like to ask the board whether it be a certain time period or just to be revisited later, that we close to the public, starting tomorrow morning. In addition to that, I had put out an email recommending boards and committees postpone or cancel non-time-sensitive board meetings. The Planning Board is meeting on this Wednesday because they had a scheduled public hearing that they needed to have. Other than that, I believe everything else has been postponed. The Planning Board has a public hearing that they will meet and convene Thursday just to continue the hearing, they have to just physically meet and vote, they will not have any other discussion Thursday night. I am in the process of working with different online forums, Zoom and WebEx, to find another way that we can offer public meeting and public interaction. If you'll see, Brett, I don't know if you've changed the heading on the bottom to show, we are allowing emails through meetings, so if someone has an issue and they want to send in an email question for this topic, I will read it aloud. We'll do the same at the Planning Board meeting Wednesday night, and then figure out how to deal with public meetings going forward. Obviously, as you see, we've distanced the room this evening, we've limited public participation as best we can. But it's really unprecedented what's happening, and every couple of hours, the regulations from the state are changing. We should keep in mind town meeting and the town election. Currently, the state, the pending legislation for elections only covers elections between now and May 1st, our election is May 4th, so we're still keeping that sort of in mind, the same with town meeting. I'm recommending that we continue the course that we're on, planning for our April 27th town meeting, but it is something to keep in mind that we may have to either postpone or find an alternative to. The governor has gone as far as to allow town meetings to continue into next fiscal year in deficit spend budgetary line items until a budget is set. I hope we don't have to get to that point, I would love to have our town meeting in April and conclude our business, but these are things we need to continue to think about. I would also ask that the board make some type of vote tonight to technically close playgrounds and playing fields. At 3 o'clock today, there was probably 50 people down at the pines playing basketball, softball, and on the playground. If they're not gonna take it seriously, we should at least put something out, send out a code red call, and tell people that they're welcome to use green grass if they want to go out, but they should still leave distances and not do, you know, public interactions. I feel like those are the things, the steps that we can take here to try and limit the spread of the virus. As of today, we have no positive cases in town, we have no presumptive cases in town, and I'd like to keep it that way. So I wanted to discuss that with you, I would ask that you take a few votes on this, so we can start putting out some notices, some other notices to residents, so I will turn it over to the board now for your thoughts.
Mike, you gonna have?
Oh, yeah. I have seen the people at the playground and the pines, I've seen people, kids, high school kids, riding their bikes together, I know they're not siblings, walking around together with kids in town, and I can't understand for the life of me why the parents would allow this to happen. There is a closure of everything, governments, travel, theaters, Disney, cruises, everything's closing down to help stop the spread of this virus. It is not a vacation for people, it is not an extended vacation for people to go ahead and, you know, take their kids on playdates, or allow their kids to interact with people not in their immediate family. This is a serious issue that people need to take seriously. If they're not capable of self-containment or self-isolation, then the government's gonna have to do something about it, limiting where they can go, and like Denise said, closing the pines or closing structures, just so people understand that we're not going to allow groups to unnecessarily interact with each other. If you get the idea that this is harsh now, this is only for a couple of weeks, hoping that we can limit and mitigate the spread of the virus, if we are unable to do that as a country, we're going to start seeing mandated issues come down the pipeline, where curfews, and you're not gonna be able to go out a lot, and there's gonna be kind of a martial law. So if you think that this is intrusive now, it can get much, much worse. All you have to do is see videos of what happened in China or in Italy, about how strict things can be, so it's either you take the initiative to do it yourself for a couple of weeks and kind of bite the bullet, or you're gonna be told what you can and can't do for the next few months. It's really up to you, but if you can't act like an adult and a big boy to take initiative of your own, then we'll have to do it for you.
Bill?
Yeah, I can understand your frustration, Mike, it's definitely uncharted water and unprecedented circumstances we live in today. And it's, I can understand your frustration, but it's also difficult when you've grown up in a free society as we have, to suddenly have those freedoms completely eliminated, it's very difficult for a vast majority of people. It is a very difficult and serious situation, and town meeting really, really has me concerned. We need 100 people to have a quorum, and.
Can I just may interrupt you on that? So one of the governor's changes is this board can vote to lower the quorum for town meetings for a limited basis, so if we proceed, that's something that this board could discuss.
Right, and I know they've lowered it to 50, and they've lowered it to 25, and now the president, Tate, came out and said to 10. That's hardly a representation of our town, and if you, you know, anybody who's been to town meetings over the last several years can understand the demographics of our town meeting, it's predominantly the elderly folks, which we understand are most susceptible to this virus. So it behooves us to do whatever we can to, you know, ensure the safety, health, and well-being of those folks. I'd like to encourage everyone as well, we all know some elderly people, make sure, you don't have to visit them, knock on the door, email, phone call, make sure they're all right, make sure they get everything they need. And I would ask people, if you've been to the stores lately, you'll realize that it's almost a disgrace what's going on. I've been to the stores, I took what I needed, and left the rest for people that needed as well, and I encourage people to do the same. In these times of unprecedented circumstances, I ask everybody to turn to your neighbor, not turn on your neighbor, it's very important. We're gonna either get through this by ourselves together, or we'll die as fools together, I think that's one of the quotes. As far as closing Town Hall, I think that's a very good idea, given the circumstances, limited contact is probably the necessary thing at this point. I know they've closed the schools for at least three weeks, they've suspended all sporting activities at the high school level, I'm not even sure, I feel bad for the seniors this year, because I don't know if they're gonna have a graduation. So they may have seen the last of each other, which is a sad, sad thing as well. But again, these are unprecedented times, nobody in our lifetime has lived through these, and like to Mike's point, I caution everybody to be as diligent and as prudent and as careful and as cautious as you possibly can be. The life you save may be your neighbor's, may be your family members, so let's all do our part as best as we can, and yeah, I'm all for what you recommend, I think it's the wise thing to do at this moment in time.
Well, I guess I either have a point of order or information, what I'm wondering is, we all received from Copelman and Page a sample statement for the declaration of an emergency, and I'm assuming that we're talking about acting on this and making this as our motion, am I incorrect?
So I was not recommending to declare a town-wide state of emergency, that's something the board could certainly do.
This makes sense to me, I mean, do you want me to read the draft without our name in it, so you can understand what they're advising that we can do?
Was that the emails that came over?
Yeah.
From Copelman and Page, our attorney.
It's one of them that's come out.
Right, so it says, you know, whereas the 2019 novel coronavirus, COVID-19, is highly contagious and potentially fatal respiratory disease, the prevalence of which is increasing rapidly throughout the world, inclusive of the United States and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And whereas on March 11th, 2020, the World Health Organization designated that the COVID-19 outbreak a pandemic health emergency, and whereas on March 10th, 2020, the governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts issued a declaration of the state of emergency to respond to COVID-19. And whereas on March 13th, 2020, the President of the United States announced a national declaration of emergency. And whereas on March 15th, 2020, Governor Baker announced emergency actions to respond to the evolving COVID-19 public health emergency impacting the Commonwealth, including prohibitions on public gatherings of 25 or more people, and prohibitions on premises of consumption of food or drink at bars and restaurants from March 17th through April 6th, 2020. As well as suspension of elementary and secondary school education operations from March 17th until April 6th, 2020. And whereas, we've put our name in, the Board of Selectmen of the town of Groveland and its Board of Health in consultation with the State Department of Public Health, has determined that COVID-19 presents a major disaster which poses an immediate threat to public health, safety, and general welfare of people residing both within and outside of Groveland. And whereas Groveland Board of Selectmen and its Board of Health have determined that immediate public action is needed in order to prevent or minimize the spread of COVID-19 by and among people of Groveland. And whereas it is critical to take additional steps to prepare for, respond to, and mitigate the spread of COVID-19 to protect the health and welfare of the people of Groveland. And whereas declaring a state of emergency will facilitate and expedite the use of resources to protect persons from the impacts of COVID-19, including but not limited to emergency expenditures pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 31, and limitations on operating hours and access to public buildings. And whereas the Board of Selectmen of Groveland and the Board of Health of Groveland recommended that a state of emergency be declared in Groveland, now therefore we, the Board of Selectmen of Groveland and the Board of Health of Groveland, Massachusetts, hereby declare that as of, let me put the date in, of today, if that's when we do it, a state of emergency exists in Groveland, Massachusetts. This declaration of emergency shall remain in effect until further notices given pursuant to our judgment, that the conditions leading to this declaration no longer exist, which I believe will enable us to cordoned off recreational facilities to close public buildings and encourage people to take more protective actions. And I feel like that's where we need to go, because I feel just as shocked, I'm sure, as everybody else in all of these schoolchildren do, and you don't quite know what to do right now. We're booting up on our computers the distance learning for our students, and we'll be reaching out to them to get them engaged again, but meanwhile, perhaps this would help us make sure that our scarce resources, our police and our firefighters and our first responders, are not unnecessarily exposed to this virus by having to clear playgrounds or ask people to just, you know, spread out or something. You know, people, if we say this and we close our town buildings, then our town hall employees are protected, I personally want to thank all of them for coming in under these circumstances, I know it's incredibly stressful, I could feel in the school buildings stressful for everybody who's involved, but perhaps this would help encourage the right behaviors and encourage everybody to take the protective actions that they need to do, so we can reach the end of this and resume our normal schedules. But without doing this, I don't know legally where we are, that's my question, so I'll pass this to you if you do not want me to pass it to you.
So my only comment on that, Kathy, is I would strike the Board of Health, because we have not been informed that the Board of Health has voted to declare a town of emergency, if you will. And then I still think you should then be more specific with what actions you're taking under this declaration of emergency, because it does say limitation of operating hours and access to public buildings, I think we should actually make that, you know, if you're specifically stating, you know, effective March, that most of them are, you know, as we're sitting here, I'm getting more towns that are closing as of 8:00 a.m. tomorrow morning. I do think we should put a caveat, you know, you can't necessarily close the pines, but we should say the playing fields and the playgrounds are off limits until a future point, I mean, I just think you should be, this is great, I think you should then be more specific on what you're then declaring under this, and I would remove the Board of Health from the language.
Okay, so removal of the Board of Health and additional closing of all town buildings to the public, is that, yes?
What, any idea what the electric company is doing at the public building?
They closed as of Friday.
They did.
I'm sorry, as of today, I got an email from their general manager yesterday that they are closing to the public as of today.
You wanna put that in the form of a motion?
Well, Mike, I think has a.
You can put in a motion, we can discuss it after.
Consider it in, without having to read through it all, we want to pass it down, if you want to look it over to see what it does say, it's, like I said, it's not me, I didn't write this, it was from our attorney.
I can reemail it out too, if anyone.
I have it.
I've got it already.
Okay, fair enough, good.
So can I assume it's March 17th at 8:00 a.m. that you'd like to discuss?
Yes, with the, with the.
Or in the motion?
Yes.
If you want to clarify the motion, I'll second it, and then I'll.
Okay, I'll clarify that the motion will take effect 8:00 a.m. on March 17th, including the closure of all public buildings to the public, but we will remain available for contact through email, telephone, and even the letter drop, correct?
Yes, and I will say the library plans to, if this goes forward, they plan to do like a curbside pickup, if someone calls and requests a book, they will bring it out to them outside, so they will stay interacting with their patrons as well. That's what most libraries are doing currently, is a curbside pickup.
Is that the motion?
Yeah, I mean, yes, that's, and then the closure of common recreational facilities where people can congregate, right?
I'll second that.
Okay.
And then I guess it's the discussion now. So as far as. So, as far as regular town business, most of it can be done online still. I mean, I know there's a few things that can't be, but there, most of it still is available to be done online. So, you don't have to physically come to town hall.
Correct. So, you can pay all of your bills online, you can order birth, death, marriage certificates, you can apply for your dog license, you can apply for and check the status of your building permits. That's pretty much, you can, you know, send in your information for an abatement. So, that's pretty much the majority of the day-to-day business, all that can be done currently online.
So, it's not like you're gonna miss out, so the people know whoever's actually wanting this, that you're not gonna miss out on being able to do 90% of the business that you would do in town, you can do it online anyways.
Correct. And a reminder that for any of those services, with the exception of the building permit, because that's a different option, but with the taxes, the marriage certificates, dog licenses, if you use your checking account, the town covers the fees. So, there's no fee, there's no additional cost to residents to go on there and use their checking account to pay for any of these items. The credit card fees still exist if people choose to use their credit card, but that exists today. So, there's no change to that. The light department, their bills are online and available to pay online as well. They have put a box out front, I guess, of their facility, so people can drop payments in there as well.
There's also a drop box out here for anything coming in here.
A follow-up to that is just an understanding from my perspective about what parents are going through. I have a high school kid, I have a middle school kid. Three days into it, they're driving me crazy, right? But I understand that the short-term goal grossly outweighs the long-term goal, right? I would rather do this for two or three weeks than have to do this for three to six months, right? This is a unique situation that has not been seen ever, where everybody in the country, everybody in the world plays a part in this, right? This is a unique situation where every action that you undertake plays a part in the spread of this disease. So, saying that, oh, I'm healthy, or my kids are healthy, they don't have any issues, that may be true, they may be asymptomatic of the issues, but transmitting that to someone who may have health issues, or older or younger, and don't have that immune system is very real, right? I'm practicing it at home, my in-laws live in an in-law suite, I don't interact with them, I keep a distance, I ask them for something, I say, put it on the front porch, I'll come get it after you go back inside. It's a simple thing to do for a couple of weeks, again, voluntary. Where it becomes mandated and martial law type thing is a very real situation that can happen, and you don't want to get to that point, because that is when things get really scary, right? This is something we can control as a, just a citizen of Groveland or Massachusetts, this is not a Seattle thing, this is not a New York thing, this is not a Nashville thing, this is a citizen of the country thing. We all play a part in this. So, I ask if you take it seriously, do what you can for the next couple of weeks, manage your kids, manage the expectation, talk to them about what's going on, and then let's just try to mitigate, as people have been saying, soften that curve, that, you know, we don't want to see that spike.
What kind of notice were the other towns giving?
So...
Was it, because I just looked now, it's five after seven, town hall closes in 55 minutes, and we've basically given folks no notice that we're gonna...
So, to be honest, it's all over the board. West Newbury Board of Selectmen had an emergency meeting Sunday to close as of this morning. As we're sitting here, the Town of Billricka just sent out their code red that as of tomorrow morning, they're closed. I think, given the situation, it's pretty much immediate. We already have it posted on our website, as you noticed, on our doors, asking residents not to come in anyways. So, I think people are already aware. I would, in fact, then put out a code red call, you know, tomorrow, just sort of solidifying whatever vote you take, just so every resident is aware of whatever takes place until further notice. But we'll, I'll put it on our website tonight, so it'll be out there, but, and then that'll go to Facebook and Twitter.
Now, are we talking about total restriction of use of the recreation areas, the pines, the parks, what have you? I'm not talking about taking a team for practice, but if you want to get out there with your son and daughter, two people, and throw a little hoop to get out and get some air and get some relief, is that going to be restricted, or is...
So, what I would recommend, that I took from some other town statements, all town playgrounds and playing fields will remain closed, families are welcome to play on grass areas, but please do not engage in group activities or activities that require contact, and please remember to maintain at least a six-foot distance from others. That's what most towns are putting out as far as their public areas. So, again, you're welcome to take a walk, run around the grass area, but, I mean, I even think as far as basketball, I would like to make something that if the police are driving through there and seeing people, they could say, hey, you know, you really shouldn't be out here playing right now. I would prefer to limit it to not basketball, because you don't know if it's just a father and son, or, you know, then you're getting people contacting, engaging in contact with one another.
Yeah, I could definitely see if there's 10 people out there at the basketball court, that could be a problem. If it's a father and a son, or a father and mother and a daughter, that may not be such an issue. How about the dog park? Are we also going to restrict the use of that? I mean, it's quite a congregation can be there at any one time.
I mean, I would say that sort of falls under the whole six-foot social distancing. I mean, again, it's sort of up to what you all decide, but I think that sort of is lumped in with close quarters and people being around each other.
That'll mean we will delay the opening of the bathrooms, I would imagine, for sure. The boat ramp, will we delay the launching of the docks?
So, we don't normally do that until sort of the end of April anyways. That's sort of a wait-and-see. We've done it earlier in the past, because Haverhill's crew team, they don't have a crew team playing or rowing right now, so that's all sort of a wait-and-see.
I think that could be a wait-and-see type of thing, see how the next three weeks go.
And should we get to that point? I mean, the boat, you're not really interacting if you're launching your boat and going out on the river. It's not so much as a group activity, but, you know, we could discuss that and see what happens over the next four or five weeks.
This is where it gets really kind of complicated, and you're relying on people to kind of take matters into their own hands and, you know, self-adjust to the situation and not force us to make decisions for you. I mean, I don't want to do that. I'm not a proponent of big government, I'm not a proponent of Big Brother and coming down on you, but you have to take some responsibility at some point to understand the situation and then adjust your lifestyle for the next couple of weeks, and then we'll adjust it again from there. But everybody's doing the same thing, you know? And it's a, it's a good idea to really take this as your own initiative and not make us...
Oh, I agree, but you know what they say about common sense, it's very uncommon.
I know.
Far as the boat ramp, that the social distance, it's one person launching a boat, the people they have on their boat, and they're not really interacting with anybody else. We've got probably six weeks before we have to deal with that. It seems like there's plenty of time to deal with the boat ramp. Kathy, did you have something?
Yes, I was just gonna say, and I hear where you're coming from, you want to be able to play with your children still, but I think we have to have that happening in a way that we know for sure that we're not congregating on our recreation centers, because we, as a selectman, have a responsibility to the community for safety and for keeping people as healthy as we can. Right now, we don't have a case of this flu in our town yet that we know of, but this is a fluid situation, it's changing by the hour, by the day. Personally, to be known as a selectman that erred with an abundance of caution and took away a little too much, then didn't take enough steps, and we end up with the virus here in our town, or with somebody, or a segment of our population.
There was, just to add on to that, there was one document that I read that, you know, we'll never really know if we overreacted, all right, or we took too much, or we did too many steps, but you'll be sure to know that if we didn't do enough.
Exact, that's it, exactly.
You have something?
I just want to add, so, I am on many listservs with the municipalities across the Commonwealth, and I can tell you that there's been no shortage of emails today, that every city in town is considering these same actions. We're not unique, like I said, we're one of the only ones that are still open to the public as of today. There are some more stronger limitations going to effect. We did already close our Council on Aging to programs, we've closed the library to programs, so I would agree, I just think it's necessary, again, it's the unknown, we don't know if what we do is gonna even have any impact, but I would personally like to keep it that we don't have any cases in Groveland. If we can get to that point and say that, you know, maybe it's the decisions we made had that effect, I just think we need to do our part, and if people choose not to follow it, you know, common sense has to play a part, we can't control everything, but I think it's worth taking the steps at this point to try and protect our residents.
And just reading from this paperwork here, before that, anybody with kids in school knows that something as simple as a common cold just goes right through a classroom. This is certainly a lot more contagious than that. But according to this, Groveland still has no known presumptive cases, but the Board of Health continues to monitor the situation. And also added here, the Board of Health does not have the ability to test residents at the present time, and it refers everybody to any questions. www maskgov backslash resource backslash information dash on dash the dash outbreak dash ob dash canora dash disease dash 2019 dash COVID-19 for more information. Any other discussion on this?
I will just say that's on our website too, so people can go to our homepage and can find all of those links in that statement.
Is that, is that, is that 2019, or should that be 2020?
No, I copied it right from the state's website.
Any other discussion on that, on the motion? We'll read the motion before we take a vote, it was made and seconded.
So, Kathy's motion is to accept the sample, well, accept the declaration of emergency for the Town of Groveland, striking the Board of Health from there until they choose to vote on their own declaration. To add that this will close all public buildings beginning 8:00 a.m. on March 17th, staff will stay on hand to answer questions, respond to calls, et cetera. And I did not know if you want to use the language I had as far as recreational facilities, or yours was common recreational facilities to be closed until further notice. Or do you want me to use the language about playgrounds and public spaces, all town playgrounds and playing fields will remain closed, families are welcome to play on grass areas, but please do not engage in group activities or activities that require contact, and remember to maintain at least a six-foot distance from others.
What was the first choice, just the common areas are closed?
Yeah, you said common recreation facilities to be closed.
Well, that, I feel like that's easier to identify, we can put a...
The pines in Washington Park?
You can lock the basketball courts, lock the bathroom...
Strawberry Fields, it's everywhere.
Is there anything down at Strawberry Fields?
It's a common recreation area.
Planning to start up, this would, this would count for them too.
Right, we should close it. So, therefore, no fields are being used for, by teams of any kind.
Is there a timeline where we're asking to do this, or is this indefinitely until we reverse it?
In my opinion, I would leave it open-ended like this is, because it's such a fluid situation. If you had asked me at the beginning of this week, if I, beginning of last week, if I thought the school was gonna close, I would have said, no, that's not gonna happen.
So, this would be something if it does mitigate in the next four to six weeks, we could then reverse this and then just go back to normal, or normalization?
Or you pick a, or you pick a day around one of your meetings and vote to extend it, however you want to handle it.
Well, it's until, until we change it, according to the motion I made, right? What does the end of that say?
What was the motion, keep it open?
Until further notice.
And the latest estimates are July, August.
Yes, sadly it is.
Okay, any further discussion? Ready to vote? Read the motion? Been motion, been made and seconded, no further discussion, all in favor? In unanimous. Next order of business.
Can I have one additional point on discussion of this Corona VD? Is our meetings, in the event that one more of us becomes quarantined, are we, we are able to meet remotely? Is that true?
Yes.
They believe the open meeting law regulations...
Right, so that's currently the remote participation, the way it currently is written, prior to the emergency declaration, was you had to have a quorum in-person present, and the chairman must be present. The new regulations are you don't have to have a quorum present, it can all be done remotely. So, you could all be sitting in your homes and have a meeting, if we can get one of these softwares up that allows the public to then participate on your virtual meeting, if you will.
I thought it said that, if I read them correctly, and again, maybe you need to go through it some more, that our only obligation would be to record that meeting, so the public could see that it happened, not necessarily have it be open to them. I'm not saying this is a good thing, but I'm just reading what the lawyers have sent to us. So, my only reason for bringing it up was to make sure that within our board here, we all have access to the kind of equipment necessary to meet remotely. I mean, I know I do, we have laptops, iPads all over the place right now with all my school stuff at home, but does, does everybody here have an abundance of technology, so that if we had to meet somehow remotely, we could do something?
Yeah, I mean, if it's depending on the regulations that we have to abide by, just a Google Hangout could suffice for the meeting.
Or like a Google dot, yeah, like sharing.
But being able to have the access, the public access, that, that's...
Well, so, there's a couple of different ways to take that. So, you could, if there's no ability to have the public watch or listen in, you would have to sort of provide a transcript of the conclusion of it to identify what took place until formal minutes are posted. You know, we could certainly make arrangements, and like I said, we're working on some options, something to just, to think about. Other towns have actually shut meetings to the public, so no public is allowed to participate until this is done. Again, I, you know, if we have people coming before you, that's up for the board to decide. I would recommend, I was gonna talk about it under the budget section, I would recommend that our March 30th meeting and the special meeting on April 6th be just budget workshops and town meeting workshops, and no other discussion, other than approving the warrants unless something of an emergency nature comes up. I think all other public business with the public should be pushed off until after we get through the next two meetings, and then that way, it's, you know, sort of this forum sitting here, just going through the town meeting articles and the budget. And then that way, again, it can be broadcast live, people can watch, people can email with questions, but then you're not having a lot of public wanting to attend and participate in whatever the discussion matter is.
And we're eliminating each other's exposure as well.
Correct. And if we have to do that virtually, we'll figure that out in the next two weeks, and we can deal with that, so.
Mike Dempsey to present the FY21 Community Preservation, Preservation Recommendations. Mike, you're up.
Mike Dempsey, 33 Uptech Road, representing Community Preservation Committee.
Well, no one's used it too very...
We should just stop that now. I would say, Mike, why don't we not use the podium since...
They all have them in that, did you change it from...
But I would suggest we eliminate the podium, because we're now having multiple people come up to the same podium. We'll create an epicenter, as much as possible.
Mike, you have a microphone there?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, we have seven potential projects for community preservation funds that have gone through the Community Preservation Committee this year, and the committee did quite a bit of work checking on, to make sure the projects all were meeting the CPA requirements, which they are, and also to check on the numbers. We changed a couple of things on them. So, what you have before you is what was approved by the CPC. I'll go through briefly, go through each one, and just tell you a little bit about them. I can answer any questions. But just in general, the total project request right now is 600,877. There is one project, number seven, that most likely will increase when the CPC meets one more time due to some recent financial requirements on the trail that were, that just came up. So, inevitably, it will be more than the 600,000. And the good news, I think I notified you before, is that we had the 54.3% match from the state, we were the 24th highest in the state, again, near the top, top 10%, and so that's good. So, we were able to, between local collections and the match, we had 505,498 dollars added to our CPA funds. The state match was 177,918, so that's, that was pretty significant compared to prior years. So, let me go through the projects... So let me go through the projects and then quickly, and then I can answer any questions on each one. So the, let's see. Okay, the first one is the CPA Bagnell Playground Request. And that one is for three twenty-five, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So this includes the purchase and installation of a new ADA certified, all-inclusive playground at the Bagnell School. The design includes playground equipment that's age-appropriate from pre-K through grade six. It's handicapped accessible equipment and rubber ground surface for complete, all-inclusive playground access. The current playground there, as you know, is kind of outdated and rundown. And most of the requirements of today's safety and accessibility aren't met by the current playground. So this project is fully supported by the folks at the Bagnell School. They, they were the ones who brought it forward and the parents are excited about getting that one done.
Mike, excuse me, just a second.
Yeah.
Do you want, you want to vote on each one of these as you go? Do a, a discussion on each one and then
Sure.
We have to do each one separately anyway.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Vice Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
You don't necessarily need to vote on these because you'll be voting on the warrant articles individually. So it's up to you if you want to vote tonight or just hear the discussion and engage in dialogue and then vote when you vote the warrant. It's up to you.
Why don't we do it that way?
Yeah, but I'll answer any questions on each individual one then, anyway.
Okay, anybody got any questions on the playground for the Bagnell School? Mike?
No, I remember the conversation.
Bill?
No.
Kathy?
That was based on?
No, I'm all set. Next, dog park.
Yes, the dog park. Okay, let me find that one here. Yes. So this project allot's twenty-five thousand dollars towards a dog park that will ultimately cost approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So the remainder of the cost is going to be paid for by a grant from the, a foundation that funds dog parks in Massachusetts. So we're basically putting in ten percent that's required towards the project and then we'll get the grant. The project calls right now for putting the dog park in, down at the pines. But we're, but we kind of leaving it open. The, the warrant article will, will say that it either will be built at the pines or a similar location in town. I think Jason's here and he's going to be talking later about some of the issues related to the location of the dog park. So I won't go into that too much.
Any questions, Mike, on that?
Nope.
Bill?
No.
Next, library document, historic documents management.
Yes. Okay. So this project is put forth by the library and they're asking for twenty-four thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And this will provide funds to preserve and protect historic documents, photos and files. They're a public resource that currently stored at the library, but they're really not accessible. So this is going to enable the library to connect to our LaserFish software here in Town Hall and be able to scan in the, the files, the documents. The project's going to include a scanner that can actually scan in books without breaking them and other larger items, so that's kind of cool. And once that's all in there, then the public will be able to come into the library and view the documents or files without having to actually pull them out of the storage space.
Any questions for Mike on that? Bill, go ahead.
Mike, is that for just the software and the technology or that include also the labor to do all this scanning of these documents?
No, it doesn't include any of the labor. The labor is going to be provided by the library staff and volunteers under their direction. So what this includes is, I believe, three computers, three scanners in connection between the library building and Town Hall because we don't have to buy any more software for it because we're going to be using the software that we already use here in Town Hall.
So this is all hardware then?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Basically, right.
Kathy, any questions?
No.
No, Mike? Next, Mike.
I'm sorry, may I ask a question? Mike, we talked about originally that this article would include a fiber connection. Is that still the plan?
Yes.
So we would look to connect Town Hall and the library with the fiber through the conduit that exists.
Yes, right.
Is that, were concluded in this?
Yes.
Pines Boathouse?
Yes. The Pines Boathouse request is for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to build a building out here in the pines near the boat launch that will accommodate the use of storage for the boats that are used for rowing and to start a rowing program at the schools in cooperation with Haverhill at Penn Tucket Regional High. And then it, perhaps even expand it further than that later on. I think most of you know about this one since I think this was pretty much come from your committee, this request to go in that direction.
Any questions for, go ahead, Bill.
Now that we know that Haverhill doesn't really want to include Penn Tucket, is there a reason to go forward with this project knowing that we don't really?
That's not true.
No?
They've been in active discussions.
Oh, they have, so they've re, re-engaged?
They always were. It was a miscommunication from the start. They always had the intention of including Penn Tucket. It was a matter of having a dialogue with the two athletic directors to figure out how many students, when it would start, et cetera. The plan was to start up the spring, again, with the program now not. And I have spoken to our counterparts, if you will, over in Haverhill. And we told them before we get to town meeting, we will sit down and have an actual written agreement articulating what they're going to be providing to the students of Penn Tucket. But no, they've all along had been planning to work some arrangement out. It was just a miscommunication originally.
So we got to a lot of bad information. I was misinformed because
I thought it was a go, then it was a no-go, and then there was a go.
And I was pretty much getting it directly from Penn Tucket's A.D., so.
Right, but Penn Tucket's A.D. never spoke with Haverhill's A.D.
Well, and Penn Tucket's A.D. should not speak out of, out of turn.
Right, so again, Penn Tucket thought Penn Tucket thought it was starting last spring, Haverhill thought it was starting in the fall, and then they never communicated through the summer to decide that it was going to happen. So we have been in contact with, I've been in contact with Haverhill city councilors, the chief of staff to the mayor, the Haverhill Athletic Director and Groveland Superintendent. And we are all in agreement that it is moving forward, it's just a matter of putting the logistics down on paper.
So there won't be an issue with the number of boats and not enough boats for the butts that want to sit in the boats?
So initially, without more planning, Haverhill has agreed to, I believe it's twenty students to add on to the current program. They can accommodate the coaching staff and the boats to accommodate twenty. Jabe thought that that was sufficient for the first year to see how much interest there really is before they decide if they need to grow the program. As we've talked about, I think we've talked about it in this meeting, the hope would be that somewhere down the line now with, that we're building a new high school, that Penn Tucket would form their own crew team. Again, when that would happen, and if that happens, is down the road. But this would hopefully spear a whole program at Penn Tucket.
Okay, all right, great.
Mike? Kathy?
Thanks, Mike. So we're, are we paying for the entire cost of building this boat structure?
Yes.
Okay, so we're paying, and it's the sculling, it's, you know, yeah, the team rowing, which is a great sport. My son did it down at Mass Maritime, you can pick it up anytime. But I guess I would want to see the agreement prior to this going to town meeting to ensure that our students are not like an add-on because it sounds like we're, we're putting all the money up. And all Ha, all Haverhill's going to do is come, put all their boats in our shed, right?
Well, again, yes and no. They're paying for the staff, they're paying for the additional boats, that's
I'd like to see all that broken down, yeah.
I understand that, that's why I said we're going to have an agreement formally put together.
So before our voters have to decide to vote on this at town meeting floor, they will know for sure what's being provided to us in response to us building and taking care of the boats in the shed, right?
So can I guarantee before town meeting with school not in session? No, but before we put a, but before we put a dime in the project, we will ensure that's the case. So if it doesn't happen by town, we will not expend the funds without a formal agreement with Haverhill. That is, and we have told them that, we will not pay, and we will not build this boathouse unless we have a formal agreement with the City of Haverhill.
Okay, so this whole project is under our direction then?
Yes, it is.
Oh, okay.
And if we choose to build it and just build it for Groveland residents, we don't have to allow Haverhill in. We could still build a boathouse and not have Haverhill be part of it. And we could open up a community rowing program on our own, so. But yes, we won't expend it without a formal.
Okay, that's
I know I had asked Mike about, you know, using the Whittier Boat Tech students to build this, cut down on the cost of the one thirty, probably not possible now. If the Whittier Boat Tech students did it, we wouldn't have to pay prevailing wage, but that might be a moot point at this point. Anything else for Mike, go ahead.
Just a follow-up question. I know when they first came in to discuss this project, they had grandiose promise they're going to build a new ADA compliant wharf and launching ramp or whatever you call it. And they were going to get the other towns involved down along the river to enhance those grants. Has that gone anywhere, is that kind of?
No, that was all down the road.
That was down the road.
The initial priority is build the boathouse. It's going to be a basic sort of garage-type structure just to hold boats. There's not going to be anything fancy.
Right, rectangular building?
Not quite, but yeah, I mean, I guess rectangular, but with probably just like a, a light bulb hanging, minimal, minimal electricity. We'll add some security cameras down there to add on to the cameras we already have. The plan will be in the future, yes, to then allow ADA rowing and programs and, and hold regattas with other communities and things like that. But the initial, it's just build the boathouse and start the program.
Got you.
Mike, current situation aside, what was your timeline for starting this if approved at town meeting?
July first.
And now current situation taken into effect?
Next July first.
It's all, it's all, it's all unknown at this point, based on
So as long as the money's approved, it can start anytime after July?
It could start January first, going through the process if we needed to, yep.
Okay, Mike, next, recreation plan.
Yes, so this is a request for recreation funds of twenty thousand dollars from our town planner. We've done this in the past two years, is have our town planner work on an area or a plan that's covered under CPA requirements. So this year, she came in with this request. And so this is, this is a project to develop a plan to provide a review of the existing operations of our fields, facilities, and provide recommendations for improved efficiency, including an inventory of the field and athletic facilities currently used for programs and services in the community, a comprehensive list of the organizations utilizing the fields and facilities, a description of how the fields are being maintained, finding sources available for maintenance and improvements, field facilities, scheduling, and steps for, potentially steps for creating a parks and recreation division.
Any questions for Mike on that?
Sounds like a good idea.
Bill?
No, none.
Okay, next was the VZ Park Lucille's Cottage Design.
Yes, so this comes from the Conservation Commission under Historic, requesting fifty-nine thousand six hundred dollars. And so this project would provide funds for the design work, including complete architectural plans, contractor specs, estimates to rehabilitate Lucille's Cottage. It's a historic building at VZ Park. It's one of the last places up there that hasn't really been used to its full potential. And so this is going to enable an accurate estimate of costs for all work to restore the historic building. Right now, the building is just used for storage. And so with a new design and rehabilitation, the building could be used for park events, nonprofit office space, meeting space, and generate more income to support the park. In its, in its current state, the historic, it's a Kit House building that was built about a hun, about ninety years ago. And the building is really at a risk for loss if no work gets done on it. But the, the, this money is only for the design, similar to the project that was done on Washington Hall. When we did that project, we didn't go forward with knowing what the design costs were before we started getting into it, and we had to go with two additional supplemental funds. So this is hopefully to prevent that kind of thing from happening.
Any questions for Mike, Kathy?
Is it, this cost, it's specific, is it based on an estimate that you've given?
Yes, two estimates, actually, yes.
So I've been in the cottage, as you know, at, at Slockland Watson, I toured it. It has like four bath, bathrooms. I'm not sure, what was its use prior to us taking over? Because it has like multiple bathrooms, like a
It was a
Like a camp thing.
It was a dormitory.
It was a dormitory, okay. And when you take a look at design and restore, are you trying to restore the dormitory aspect or just the main, keep the building from falling down?
No, I, I think the idea is to research it and try to restore it to its original use. It was originally built as a residence
Okay.
back in, I think, nineteen thirty or so.
So are you trying to restore it to rent it out as a rental property for someone to live at or for a business to use or camp?
That will depend upon what kind of recommendations come in from the architect. Potentially, it could be meeting space and meets, you know, small meeting rooms similar to what we rent out at the, you know. But potentially, it could be limited to just office space for a nonprofit organization or a residence. Just, that's why we kind of need the architect to look at it because we don't really know what the best use of the building might be.
Mike, you have any questions? Bill?
Yeah, I understood that, I don't think this the wrong way, but I understood the best use of that building might be for kindling. I mean, ninety years old, a Kit House is, did, did, was the original cost of the house fifty-nine thousand six hundred? I'll bet you it was less than half of that.
Well, I'm sure, yes, it was a lot less than that.
So my
Ninety years ago.
Right, so my concern is that we're going to spend almost sixty thousand dollars to get an idea of what it would cost to rehab it. And then the cost to rehab could be a few hundred thousand dollars?
It'd be, it could be more.
And then we look out to rent it somehow and the return on investment would be what, seventy, eighty years? I mean, it just doesn't seem like a worthwhile investment in the long run if I just run the numbers quickly through my head.
Well, I think the idea is that the rehab, we would get, have to get, in order to do the rehab, we're going to have to get grants for that to rehabilitate a historic building. There's funds available for that, both through the state and private organizations. So that's So that's kind of the idea. So, we, that, that's really putting the burden back on the commission to find those funds. Our town is gonna commit to, you know, $59,000 and change towards saving a historic building. And like you say, I understand what you're saying, but if we had the same outlook on Washington Hall or even VZ Park, both historic buildings, and we just let them go, we wouldn't have them today, so.
Right, but some buildings are worth saving and then others aren't, I mean-
Sure, I, I think this one is worth saving because it's a unique building. When I say it's a kit house, you know-
Bought it from Sears Roebuck?
It was, yeah, we don't know if it was from Sears or one of the other companies that sold them at the time, but, you know, there's nothing like this in Groveland, certainly, but I don't, I don't even know where there's another one like it anywhere around here.
Is, is, but maybe that's, there's a reason why there's not another one like it around?
No, they're, they're very, you know, they're historically relevant type buildings, you know, it's like interesting that we've got one there.
Okay, I've gone as far.
Mike?
Kind of piggybacking on what Lachlan O'Neil had said. Did you say that it could cost hundreds of thousands of dollars outside of the $60,000 that you're looking to appropriate for this?
Well, I don't have any idea, but-
I know you don't have any hard numbers, but you say it could.
Yeah, I mean, I'm figuring it's gonna probably cost at least $200,000 to restore.
And you think the, the burden is back on the historical society to come up with those grants and funds on the backside of that $60,000?
Right.
It seems like that's kind of backwards to me, where you should get that kind of commitment upfront, and then put $60,000 into it, so you know you have that to go forward with, as opposed to putting $60,000 into it and maybe, or maybe not, getting those-
Yeah, well, right, I, I agree, you know, that would be nice, unfortunate.
Well, it just seems logical that maybe it's worth putting $60,000 in, if you have those funds, knowing in the background that you can get them to rehab the whole thing, as opposed to dropping $60,000 in, and then who knows what happens?
But that may come back, and they say it's half a million to restore this building, and then what do you do?
Well, as long as they're gonna back it with some kind of grant or-
Right, but right now, it's, it seems it's, it's a very open-ended thing, because they really don't have any idea until they get this architectural assessment done on if it's possible, and how much it's gonna be, and what the timeframe would be. It sounds like everything's gonna be contingent on this architectural assessment and structural integrity of what they have to work with, and, you know, in the meantime, a strong gust of wind could, could kibosh the whole, the whole project.
It just seems risky to put $60,000 into something that potentially just doesn't go anywhere.
Yeah, well, I, I think that, you know, we, we have to make a commitment, you know, not, if the town is gonna agree that they wanna do this, then the commission, the historic folks and the Conservation Commission are gonna have to make a commitment to do what it takes to then carry it forward.
Right, so you're not really looking at a $60,000 commitment, you're looking at a much bigger commitment.
Yeah.
It's almost like if you're going to buy a house, and the inspection says, well, you know, it's gonna be maybe at least $60,000 to renovate this house so it's livable, do you make that financial decision based on that? Or is the information coming back saying it's going to be at least $60,000, upwards maybe of three or 400,000?
Mm-hmm.
You know, that gives you a wider scope as to what your, your pain point is on it.
Right.
Or threshold is on it.
Right.
Bill?
Yeah, real quick, Sam seems to be a very knowledgeable guy, Mr. Josselin, our building inspector. Has he gone up there, and have you gone and sought his independent opinion of whether the building is really worth rehabbing at this stage, or whether it's just, it's too far gone to really invest that kind of time, money, and energy into, into it?
No, I mean, I can do that. Nobody thinks it's too far gone, it's just a matter of, you know, when you're restoring a historic building, it's different than restoring a-
Absolutely.
You know what I mean? So it's hard to really judge.
To be restored in the timeframe that it was built.
Right.
So there's certain regulations and rules you have to follow, which typically increase the cost of a normal rehab.
Right, right, you know, but again, I, I think if we take Washington Hall as an example, you know, that we totally restored at a cost of a little bit less than $400,000. But we didn't know how much it was gonna cost, and we had to keep coming back for more and more to finally get it done. So I, I would want to avoid that kind of thing. Unfortunately, it costs money to even start that process with an architect, you know. They're both, both companies that looked at it are excited about the building and its potential.
I'll bet they are, and the money they can make from the building and the potential.
Well, yes, of course, but-
Cha-ching!
Exactly.
I'm excited, too.
They're more excited about actually doing the rehab work when it, you know, and I told them, and even, you know, we have to go through the bidding process anyway, so they have to know they're not necessarily gonna get the, the project to do.
Kathy, you got a follow-up?
I just, well, I have like just two questions, I think. One is, the $59,600, like to a person such as myself that really doesn't know why it costs that much to do the study, what do they base that amount off of? Is it the number of hours that they spend to do this? I mean, the thing is already built, so they're not designing a new building. The building is built, so they're looking at a built building, and they're doing, is it because you don't know what you, you want it to look like, so they have to do several designs or something? I'm just trying to understand why it's $60,000.
Some of that, you know, I mean, they, they're gonna have structural engineers look at it and say, okay, you know, what needs to be done to improve the structure. They're gonna come back with all the estimates from all the electrical, plumbing, HVAC work that needs to be done. The architectural plans for, for it are gonna be completely done so that we can hand those to the contractor, and they can start the work. We don't have to go back and, and it's, it's going to really provide a very complete estimate of what the work is gonna take to do it, and, which is gonna be helpful, as I said earlier, about getting a grant, because when you're applying for a grant, you're kinda picking it out of the air, you really have no idea where you're going with that. So we're not gonna be in that position because of this work.
Right, but I mean, $60,000 is a lot, it's a little tiny house, I mean, it's in it. It's really cool, but it's a little, little space. My second follow-up was just, is this the last building up there that you really would consider trying to save, or are there other buildings? Because I know there's like garages or things along the side.
Yeah.
Are those, I mean, how many buildings are we gonna, I know we wanted to save the main building, now we're looking at this, are there any other buildings up there that you feel historically would need to be saved?
No, all the other buildings are used, they're all, this is the only one that really-
That's what I thought, too.
Can't be used, it's the last one left that is, you know, not really useful.
Okay, and is it possible that this amount could be brought down just to take a look to see structurally what would it take to just-
Yes, you know-
So perhaps that might be a way to go at it, because I, I hear the other, the concerns being raised is just, it is very small, and I think everyone understood the big house, why we went after that one, because it's like the epicenter sits on the hill, that's what you see. This is a very small cottage, it's really neat, I'll give you that.
Yeah.
And historically, I personally like it, but a little, little shock at the cost just to look at what we could do with it if we could-
Yes, yes, no.
Manage that better, maybe that would make it a little more palatable.
Well, as I said, we got two estimates, one was significantly higher than this amount. I pared that down originally, and then they came, the second one came in at just about what I had pared it down to. But, you know, it, it's possible, again, that when we put this out to bid, that we come back with completely different numbers, usually that's the case. You know, these weren't bids, so these folks are coming in and, you know-
Just giving you an idea.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm satisfied, thank you.
I, I should've asked Denise on, on the others, any email questions?
Uh, no, not yet.
Thank you. Mike, next, last, one, Community Trail Supplemental.
Okay, so, you're all familiar with the Community Trail, we're very close to having that start being built by the state. I think right now, the most believable starting time will be next spring, so that's great. So we're trying to tie up a lot of the loose ends and make sure that the trail will be ready to go when the state gives us the money, and the state doesn't want anything holding it up. So, right now, there are, we had some meetings about a month ago and determined that we needed about $17,000 to close out the project with the contractor that's working on it and a few other issues. Since then, we have identified a few other problems with, potential problems with easements and, uh-
Boundary markers.
Boundary markers on the, on the eight-acre parcel that's being put aside. So, I expect that we may, after having another CPC meeting to increase that amount, we're going to have to increase it. I don't, I don't have an exact number today, but, you know, it could be another, it could be up to $40,000 rather than $17,000.
May I just add a comment to that? So, Mike and I spoke today, we had, we have a conference call every two weeks on the Community Trail to discuss the ongoing issues. So, a lot of this came up this morning, and what I had recommended to Mike is, instead of just going up the $4,000 or $5,000 that we definitely know of, there are some potential easement issues. I would rather have it, you know, up to, said maybe $40,000, that way, if over the course of the next year, when we're scheduled to advertise, any of these other small issues come up, this is the last, we're in the home stretch of this project. So, again, we don't have to expend the funds, it will roll back into CPC if it's not needed, but I'd rather capture all of these sort of small items so that we're ready to go when the state is ready to give us their four and a half million dollars to build the trail.
Any questions for Mike? Mike?
What are the eas- sorry, what are the easement issues that you have?
Well, there's a, you know, if you remember on Route 97 when they did that, if you, the trail goes like five feet into someone's land-
Right.
And you have to get an easement, and you may have to pay for that, but you certainly-
Right at that crossing there between-
There, there's a spot at Center Street and School Street. There's a little area there, and then there's one other area.
Yeah, so the majority of the trail is the National Grid corridor.
Right.
But there are the, our, our town attorney has identified a couple other title areas that, they're considered like crossover sections, that a small portion of it may be privately owned, and we would have to, the engineers were identifying those this morning, so we may have to negotiate with one or two homeowners for either a permanent or a temporary easement that we would have to come up with an assessment and offer a cost for. Those are sort of the unknowns that we don't, you know, weren't anticipating until Town Council got back to me with the full title examination, so that's what we wanna plan for. I don't think there's many, I think maybe one or two, maybe even three at the very most. The majority of it is all National Grid.
But it's all small slivers?
It's all small pieces, yes.
Uh, any others? Bill?
Um, I was just wondering, you said, I've gotten some questions on this trail, so next spring would hopefully be the build-it date?
No, so we are scheduled on the February, I think February 12th, 2021 is our scheduled advertising, advertisement date for a September construction period. So it's the fiscal, the state's fiscal year, the funds would be available to build starting September, is the current plan.
So we're, we voted for this, so at town meeting, though, how many years ago? We voted quite a while ago.
Yeah, it's, it's a very lengthy process.
I'm not gonna date myself, but like-
No, but, and it is, but it's-
Still in high school, Kathy.
And like I said, we, this is, project has not sat dormant, we have been actively working, and every two weeks, we have these phone calls to check in, and the title work has taken a good year to go through, and, I mean, everything unfortunately is very lengthy. We were supposed to have a big meeting actually Wednesday at National Grid in Waltham to start really focusing on the lease, that has been canceled. On town meeting, on the town meeting warrant, you will have an authorization for town meeting to give this board the authority to enter into the lease with National Grid and any easements that we may need to negotiate, so we'll take care of the town meeting business for the approval process. But it goes back, I believe, my first or second year here, so it's probably four or five years that this has been in the process.
Okay, so 2021 is when people might be expected to go out on this, or when that's when it begins getting built?
2021 is when it, the year 2021, calendar year is when it will be built.
And then when will it be in use, do we think?
To be honest, I don't know how long it will take, I mean, it's not a lot of construction, it's sort of clearing it, paving it, we do have to put up some fencing where the turtles are and things like that. I don't expect it to be a long process.
We didn't expect the big dig to be a long process, you're just saying.
I know, but that's what I'm trying to get an idea, just so I can answer this question intelligently, I wanna get it. One year, two years, are we talking 2023, 2022?
No, I would say 2022.
Okay.
Yeah.
Again, we're advertising, we're scheduled to advertise February, and that's why it's so, the state has such stringent requirements, that if we don't have all of our ducks in a row by like this summer, they're gonna push us off again. So that's why we wanna make sure town meeting does what it needs to, we have the lease underway, so we can advertise in February of 2021.
We're connecting to existing trail on either side, are we, or not? Are we in the middle, or are we beginning, or ending?
We are connecting to trail through the Georgetown side, the Bradford side, we still, there's still a bridge issue because it goes over water.
That was gonna be my next question.
Oh, you know about this?
Well, I was gonna, because apparently it just ends right at the river, because there's no bridge to get us over to the other side.
Yeah, it will technically end at 441 Main Street, on the street side, pretty much. We haven't, because a lot of that portion is through private property.
Right.
That's something we've discussed with that property owner for a period of time. We're focusing on the piece that we know that we can build. Eventually, the second phase would be the on-road piece from 441 Main Street to the pines into this complex-
Nice.
-by use of the sidewalk, that's sort of phase two. We wanna build the corridor trail as soon as possible.
Great, thank you.
Mike, that, that clearing of, of the land down along the trail by a park fence on Main Street, is, is that in, in prep work for this rail trail, do you know? That was, that was done actually in the fall?
Yeah, no, I don't think so.
No, that was National Grid, they cleared their own land to cut trees.
I remember that, that was just maintenance they were doing.
Yes.
And, and the same, I don't know if you know about it, in Georgetown by Tressel Way, the elderly housing, they've been, they've been clearing, brushing trees along there, is that, is that the same thing, just National Grid, do you know?
I imagine, I'm not sure, though.
Thank you. I think we're all set?
Yeah, so, so I would just ask the board to-
Maybe more.
-let all of these warrant articles go on to the town meeting warrant on behalf of the Community Preservation Committee, and as we have in the past, let the wise voters of the town of Groveland have their ultimate decision on these things. Thank you.
Okay, Mike, you-
May I ask an unrelated question to Mike while he's standing there?
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
Mike?
Bye.
Oh, just wanna want to spot.
Wow.
Has VZ decided what they're doing with the flea market? Have you decided to postpone that?
Well, I think based on what you, you voted tonight, that we won't be having it.
I just wanted to clarify, because I was asked.
Yeah, no, we were heading in that direction anyway, I suspect, but, you know.
We made the issue moot for you.
Yeah, so I, I don't have to-
Now you don't have to take the blame.
I don't-
Can blame us, right?
Up to the board.
There you go.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mike, for all the work that you do.
Okay, Jason Naves from the Dog Park Committee to provide an update to the board after meeting with the police chief, fire chief, and water and sewer. Mike, I, I mean, Jason, you're up.
Thank you very much, my name is Jason Naves.
Can you go, can you go to the podium, please?
At least near the microphone, you don't have to stand at the podium, but near the microphone.
You can have my microphone if you want, sir. Do you have an extra one over there on the table? No, I don't remember his name, I'm so sorry.
You wanna grab that one?
Yeah, I think he's safe, he's old, you'd know if he had it already.
He's smart.
Jason, I like the haircut.
I like it.
I do.
My name is Jason Naves, I'm at 150 Main Street, Groveland. I'm here to talk about my meeting with Chief Valentine, Chief Gillian, and the Water Department. I met with Chief Valentine, explained the plans to him, we went over them, he looked it over to make sure there was no structures that he'd be, the Fire Department would be directly involved in, and he said he supported it and be willing to put it in writing. It was brief, it was short. When I met with Chief Gillian, it was a little different. I started talking to him, and I explained to him, and I mentioned something that he keyed in on as being great, and that was safety. He's a big fan of safety, and making of the dog park that's- And making a dog park that's larger, the dogs being more spread out, makes it a lot safer for the people, for the dogs. Having a small dog park area sectioned off away from the large dogs, making it safer for the lot, for the other dogs. I also put parking directly across from the dog park in the design that I gave you guys. He liked that because it would deter people from fishing, going to unlock doors, see and get in there, because it's directly there. The people are always close to their cars. So, we all like that a lot. But he asked me about putting lights at the dog park. I didn't put them in the plans. I had them in the previous plans. He said it seemed to be necessary, particularly in the evening times during the winter, because it was so dark. And I said, I didn't have them in there, but it was something I definitely wanted. I had it in the last plans, because at four thirty, it does get so dark, and people are getting home from work, and they need to take their dogs out and exercise. And it is a social event for people to go down there and converse amongst each other while their dogs play, sort of like when people take their kids to the park. Very similar. Then he also asked me about if we had lights at the dog park, when would it close? I said nine o'clock would seem like a reasonable time to close the dog park, just simply because come ten o'clock, you end up with noise ordinance issues. He liked that a lot. About an hour to get out there, which is more than ample time, I imagine. He also mentioned that he'd like to see all the dogs that go to the dog park get registered. I mentioned that I wasn't sure how you would enforce that. He got a very serious look on his face and said that he thought it could be enforced. So, I figured it probably would be a good idea to take a real serious look at how to implement that. And I emailed Denise on that, and she sent me some great ideas, and we've been talking about it and looking it over at the Dog Park Committee. Then we got a little off-topic, and he took his phone out and showed me a picture of his granddog, Jack. That was nice. He's actually... He's a very, very nice person. Really enjoyed the conversation. I did crash the Water Department meeting to try to get on there.
Did you crash?
Yeah, crashed it. It's very...
Brave.
Different, because it's just right in their office. It's like most of the other meetings I've been attending. Not very many people show up, and I'm assuming that's why they have it there. So, it's...
We should do that. We do that?
Crash.
Yes, absolutely. I encourage it.
Sure will fit?
Yeah.
Social distancing, now, we may not be able to have in that office anymore.
After all this passes, we'll have to maybe move it over here, but...
We've been trying.
Yes, I've been... I was there for the entire meeting, and I learned a lot. It was very interesting, very informative. At the end of the meeting, I brought out the plans so they could take a look at them. We discussed them a little bit. They recognized that a lot of people use the pathway behind the pines, the trails that are back there for their dogs. So, the dog didn't seem to be an issue being that close, having the dog park there. They did bring up a couple concerns. One was the blocking of their gates and then having parking on either side of that road making that road more narrow. So, because I guess they've had a problem with somebody blocking the gates before from people parking to use the trails. Okay, and I said, well, the parking that I have there, well, I can't guarantee that nobody's going to block the gates. It's twenty-eight spots. It's ample parking for both the trail people and for the dog park people. And so, if it's convenient for people to be responsible, they're more likely to be responsible. I said, and at the end of the parking lot, you can put a proper trailhead for the trail, which would take them away from their gated area, which says no trespassing, have a dispenser with poop bags like we have at the dog park. So, encouraging, again, people to be more responsible with their dogs. So, the whole point of having a dog park is help people be more responsible so they're less likely to let the dogs off in an area where they shouldn't be let roam free. So, he seemed very happy with that. And then, in the plans, the area for the parking, I allotted twenty feet for the parking space, which I believe from my research that a standard parking space is about eighteen feet. So, that would actually make that area where the parking is four foot wider than it is now, moving it to twenty feet. So, that was... It was good that that was all addressed. However, I did get put on the next meeting, and when I went to the next meeting, they have been working on drilling another well. And they're not sure where that's going to be. So, they're doing testing at the existing wells, and depending on how that testing goes, they're going to start drilling. And so, that area down at the pines may not be available, whereas in... Depending on where they put that well. I'm not sure where they put the well, because there's two wells there now. And I know there have to be at least two hundred and sixty-five feet before they can put another well. And that would put that four-hundred-foot mark up into this building.
Yeah.
But I don't know. So, that was what I had. Did you guys have any questions about the plans?
Mike, go ahead. Regarding the last point, do you know when they're supposed to make a decision on the well?
No, I don't.
So, that's something maybe we can facilitate. You mentioned lights down there, which can add a considerable cost.
Depends on the type of lighting. In terms of initially putting it in, I don't think it's a big cost. There's a light down at the dog park now. It's not wired or anything, so solo operate. Yes.
Is that what you would use? That was going to be maximum?
Yeah, most likely. It's easy, it's convenient. You don't have to run any wires.
Yeah, no, that would be actually an easier solution. And then, you have a small dog area, a large dog area. What are you basing those criteria on? I'm assuming weight, thirty pounds, fifty pounds?
Yeah, weight, normally what it is, twenty-five pounds or less is usually in the small dog, and over is in the livestock.
Okay. Yep, that was it for me.
Bill?
Real quick, with the... And regarding, I don't even know if you can answer this question. Talking about a new well down at the pines, didn't we just buy like a whole bunch of land over there, Angelina Mattingly property, that allegedly sits on these great aquifers? And wouldn't that be more of a... And you probably can't answer this question, but wouldn't that be more of a desirable location to drill those new wells sitting as we just paid a boatload of money, and they're allegedly sitting on the greatest aquifers in the world? Yes.
So, their plan is sort of...
Sorry, the social distancing, I can't see it.
So, it's well three that's down at the pines, and they're looking to replace well three. So, if you see, Colin did provide a letter to the board, and according to him, the new replacement, by regulation, the new replacement well must be within a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot radius of the existing well. So, if they're looking to replace well three, the new well has to be two-hundred-and-fifty feet of well three.
So, if... But if they're looking to drill a new well, not replace, they can... We can go anywhere.
I would assume so, but then they would have to keep well three online.
What if well three went dry? You couldn't keep it online. You'd have to drill a new well.
I don't know.
I think this could be resolved along the way, you know, where the well goes. A well.
Water for Groveland is important, so...
Yes, it is.
Have you thought of alternative locations if that pines location is not available?
No, not right at the moment, given that at forty-six Washington Street, the involvement of the EPA and the DEP. And then, over at the Strawberry Fields or the Greenway, it would require extensive planning to involve everything that was there. So, right now, this is pretty much it.
I know that the chairman and myself went over with the Dog Park Committee and looked at some different areas, and this was what everybody felt was probably the better area. Hopefully, we can do something with it.
Yeah, I'm...
No idea, though, when they're going to make a decision.
No, they were waiting for the test results. Apparently, the labs had messed up one of the results previously, and so they had to retest it. So, they're supposed to contact me when they get the results of that.
We probably... We're probably unable to vote on this until we get approval. You got something, Kathy?
Well, I don't think we need to vote on anything yet, as we're getting... Once we get closer to town meeting, when the town meeting's going to vote on it, then maybe more information. I mean, right now, what you're doing makes a lot of sense. You know, you put it out on a piece of paper. Thank you. And so, my only question would be just to see how this fits on all the town land and where the well... I'd like to actually see that, so I can understand this two-hundred-and-fifty-foot thing, because we're always seem to be talking about new wells, and that's great. They're great, the water and sewer. They're always looking ahead for us. And luckily, we've always had a really good supply of water because of that. So, I'm sure if you keep working with them, we can get us a thing that shows us how much that land down there is the town land. We might get a better sense of how maneuver, you know, what... Where you can maneuver it happen.
Only the four-hundred-foot mark from the existing well.
Yeah.
Puts... It takes away about ten foot of what I drew out for the large dog park.
Yeah.
Because Colin's went out there, and he measured it out and painted it off for me.
You couldn't move it anywhere else in that location.
Okay, so there's not more land to go with it?
No.
So, you would have to lose a little bit if you kept it there.
If we... If I kept it there and they didn't put another well in, we would lose a little bit.
Right.
And so, if they moved the well two-hundred-and-sixty-five feet, that would eliminate it completely.
Right, so hopefully, they'll be able to do... But if they're unable to determine that, you could still potentially go forward with just a little less space than you would have...
If the well went someplace else, then yes, absolutely.
No, no, I'm talking about if they're not sure. And they still need the buffer. They still need the buffer. You could be outside of where they want you to be.
For the current... For the current well location.
And I'll be honest, I don't know that you'd want to approve a dog park if that's the only location to build another well next to well three. I mean, I think that's something to keep in mind. I would say to you, Jason, you know, if you look at the pines, have you given any thought to, you know, once we have the new fields completed in the back, you know, what about that front section right along the driveway? If you get... I mean, I know it's more visible and it's more open, but if we're fencing it in, I mean, is something like that area work?
Yeah, sure.
If we needed to sort of move around there?
Anything like that. I wasn't looking at that area. We didn't look at that area as being a possibility, just because, I mean, that's always being used for lacrosse, football, little guys, so... And that wasn't something that I'd want to attempt to take away.
But if we could, you know, with the new field, and there's still plenty of grass in that whole front area, if we could figure something out that we still provided field space and could make something there, that would be acceptable, as far as you know. Okay, I mean, it's just another option down there to keep in mind.
Yeah, the big thing is, is just, I mean, I do like the idea of keeping it at the pines. There's already cameras in place, there's plenty of patrols, there's always people around. So, yeah, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Jason, how does... How does the not voting on that affect the CPA proposal and the proposal for filling out the paperwork for the grant?
If it doesn't go through to town meeting this time, it really doesn't affect it because it's not required. The funds can be found in other manners, but the following year will be fine as well.
All right, any other questions for Jason?
No.
No? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job. Discussion on the request from the Housing Authority to delegate the duty of responsible entity for environmental reviews at the Housing Authority to Selectman Watson.
So, this item was tabled from last meeting until Selectman Watson was here. As you'll see, we had a request from Joe Hart, the director of the Housing Authority. There's an environmental assessment checklist that Selectman Watson signed that HUD has refused to accept, based on the fact that there was no delegation of authority for the signatory on that. I will just say that, as you'll see in Joe Hart's email, he stated that they will lose federal grants if the issue is not resolved. I will just inform the board, I spoke to HUD at length, Ryan Cusick at HUD, and he wanted me to make it perfectly clear to this board that any loss of federal funds of the Housing Authority has absolutely nothing to do with the Board of Selectmen or this decision. They have been having issues with the Housing Authority for many years and will most likely lose federal funding anyways. So, he told me to make that clear to you all, that if this decision is not made tonight, it does not impact their decision for HUD's federal grants.
Can I just add to the information flow? I, being new to the board, when I saw this at the other meeting, I saw in the packet, I recognized something of it, because as when I got on the board in May, I did go back through your meeting minutes to see what you'd been doing all year, and I happened to trip across all of these Housing Authority emails and state things. And so, not understanding it still, I actually made a call to this Ryan person. Is it the Federal Housing Authority, is he? Whatever he is. He was knowledgeable. He said that he received a signed form from the town of Groveland. The first reason that it was flagged, this is my understanding, was because it wasn't completely filled out. It wasn't done right. And then, the second reason it was flagged and returned was that it wasn't signed by our current chairman of the board, who would be the... They have a term for the RE... They had initials for why the Board of Selectmen was becoming involved. I could go into your minutes and read it again. Right now, I'm blanking, I'm pulling out the... At the time that they wanted the Board of Selectmen to do something, they said the chairman of the board was the designated...
Signatory.
Responsible entity.
RE? I had it right, okay. So, responsible entity. And so, that's why the form was returned to the town because of those two reasons. And there's a lot of history on this, but I think that the Board of Selectmen, we have to all work in concert on this for the people that live back there. I don't want to just delegate out something like this that's been amassed so far without understanding a little bit more about all of these forms that has to be filled out properly. It wasn't filled out properly the first time, so we need to take some time here and make sure we get this done right.
And if I can just add, so the reason the Board of Selectmen is involved in the environmental assessment is, according to HUD and the federal regulations, the air around the Housing Authority is considered the environment, and the owner of that space is the responsible entity, which, because it's situated in the town of Groveland, the Board of Selectmen as the legislative authority is considered the entity that has to sign. That's why you're not involved in other Housing Authority matters. It's the environmental act that has to do with Groveland's environment. So, that's the reason why this matter specifically has to come before the Board of Selectmen, so...
All right, any other questions? Bill?
Questions? I guess I just have the question on how you felt you had unilateral authority to do this based on behalf of the board.
Well, I'll give you... I'll give you a rundown on that. At the October fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen meeting of the Board of Selectmen, this was originally presented, you were the chairman. And there was supposedly... Supposed to be an environmental impact study done. They had some gutter work done, and it wasn't done. And so, when they submitted the paperwork for reimbursement, it was turned down. Members of the Housing Authority had to do an online exam, Members of the Housing Authority had to do a, an, an online exam, uh, as well as the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, and, and you were the, you were the Chairman at the time. And, uh, just, uh, paraphrasing from the meeting, uh, you said, uh, "I have to take an online course because of neglect." This is very problematic, uh, it's been unresolved for months. The Board was negligent in their duties, the Board, the Board of, uh, the Housing Authority Board. "I have enough to do in my life, uh, nobody has to create work for me, uh, I have to take time away from my family to do things I shouldn't have to, uh, because somebody couldn't do their job."
Point of information, are you reading from a document?
I'm paraphrasing from the, uh, the Board of Selectmen's meeting, October fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
So are you reading the minutes of them? I would prefer that we just.
No, this was, uh, this was, uh, I, I was able to pick this up, uh, uh, online. Anybody can go on there and look up the, uh, that, that particular meeting.
So you're reading the minutes from the meeting?
I'm not reading the minutes, I'm reading the, uh, the actual televised version of the meeting that was, uh, or the October fifteenth meeting.
I don't know, I mean, I'm not an expert.
Well, I'm re.
I'm a attorney, but I do feel that the meeting minutes as accepted by this board become the official record of the meeting, not whatever I decide I want to say happened at a meeting, but I'm not, I'm not.
Okay.
I don't understand.
Okay, I'm, I'm just reading what was, I just, uh, I looked it up, uh, the comments, and, uh, so, uh, what happened was moving forward to, uh, this was October, middle of October, moving forward to, uh, sometime in July, uh, I was asked, I was given a call and asked, "Could I do the, the online exam?" And I, I said I couldn't do it because I wasn't the Chairman. And we're asked, "Well, if we can get permission from HUD for somebody else to do the online exam, uh, would you do it?" Sure, sure, we, uh, you know, the Housing Authority needed assistance, they were about to, the, money was at stake, so if you can get permission, I can do it. So, uh, we got the okay, I took the exam on July twenty-ninth, and on the August fifth meeting, um, I noted in Selectman's time that I helped the Housing Authority out with, with that. And then we come back, so it was, uh, oh, probably a couple of months ago, that there was some paperwork that after I did the online exam, we needed to sign, which we did, and that, uh, and that got rejected, and it, it, all it takes is, uh, a, uh, the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen to just to say, "Yeah, you delegate somebody else to sign the paperwork." So I, I, I did the exam and, uh, because, uh, the, the Chairman at the time wouldn't do it. And, and you as the Chairman, uh, the Chairman takes a leadership role, sets the example for the Board of Selectmen and other boards. In this particular case, the Housing Authority needed assistance, and the Chairman at the time failed to act, he failed to do his job, he failed to assist another department, money was at stake, so I stepped up to the plate and, uh, and assisted him. And, uh, and that's how this all transpired, and we just need approval, a lot of money's at stake, and, uh, so, anybody else could, uh, could go ahead and, and do the exam, uh, wasn't something we needed the Selectmen's approval from, we got the approval from HUD, and now we just need, uh, approval, uh, to, to sign the paperwork. If you don't want to, if you don't want to give the approval, then that's, that's fine, they'll, they'll lose the money.
I'm just still confused.
So am I, because I know you've mentioned money, 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 and Denise has said there's absolutely no correlation between this and money. So I guess I need to get at the actual truth. Is there money involved, or is there no money involved? It's my understanding there was no money involved, and regardless of, of this, um, and, and, this Board's, um, has nothing to do with that Board's failure to comply with certain regulations or, or, or training or whatever that's going to cost them money or the Housing Authority money, it has nothing to do with this Board. And again, um, I remember that conversation vividly, they came, it was actually Joe Hart that reached out to me because he couldn't get anybody on the Housing Authority to do anything. And at that time, I did not feel it was my obligation to do someone else's work. They ran for those positions, those are elected positions, they're not voluntary positions, they're not appointed positions, these people ran for these positions, and if they ran for it, they should want to do their job, that's all. And if they don't want to do it, why run? So my first clarification is, 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 is there money involved, and is this Board, uh, the cause of that money not being funded or granted or whatever? Can I have the truth on that?
I, I can just tell you what Ryan Cusack from HUD told me. The Housing Authority losing their federal grants has nothing to do with this. They have been having issues since two thousand and seventeen when this project was done for a myriad of different reasons. He has gone through all different channels at HUD to try and address the situation, um, and he has told me that not only will it likely impact the federal grants from two thousand and seventeen to present, it will likely impact future years, again, not as a result of this, as a result of other issues that HUD is having with the Housing Authority.
Thank you for clearing, clarifying that for me, appreciate it.
Well, they're looking for reimbursement for this, uh, this, this particular project. Mike, go ahead.
Um, I believe, uh, Bill, when you were Chair, the reason you, and I'm just going off a minute here, the reason that you did not want to take the class was because you wanted that Board to come in and talk to us about some of the issues that were going on and address some of the concerns, both internally and from HUD themselves.
There were many issues beyond the one stated here that were on Joe or Mr. Hart's plate.
Right, so I think you used that.
Hadn't been resolved.
To say, "I don't, I don't think I should take the class," uh, when it's, again, their job to, to do the work and everything that they signed up for, but you, I think you said, "I would like them to come in and talk to us about this situation before I go and take that class," but that's, just trying to understand, two years ago. But, uh, Selectman Watson, you had said that you had got the okay from HUD to move forward with taking the class, do you remember who gave you the approval to move forward with that from HUD?
Yes, I had spoken to, uh, uh, Joe Hart, and he said they had approval that, uh, that I, that I could take it, uh, take the exam.
Well, I mean, more clarification on that, did, who did Joe Hart talk to at HUD?
Uh.
That said it was okay for somebody else other than the Chairman to take that class and sign off on the document?
That, that, that I, that I don't know, he just said that we had got approval, that we, being the Board, had got, uh, uh, he's the Executive Director, had got approval from HUD to, uh, that anybody could take it, seeing as how that the, the Chairman at the time, uh, wouldn't, wouldn't do it.
That's it for now.
I just, again, being new to the Board, um, I did try to pay close attention when I first got on the Board, I did go back a year and look through, and I saw the, um, issue there, but it didn't look like it was still unresolved. I don't recall us having a discussion since I've been on the Board about this issue. I do know that the person I spoke to, Ryan Cusack, in the Office of Public Housing in Boston, he's the General Engineer, um, was very knowledgeable, and he said, and I, and this is in the email, I can put it into our record, whatever you want, um, I sent it to Denise once I received it, that, um, they received the document but did not process it as it wasn't fully complete, it didn't clearly state the determination. Okay, so it's not just about us voting someone here to sign this, this needs to be completed correctly, so that will take time, is what I'm saying, we cannot just sign this, it's been done incorrectly and sent in, and now sent back, and then I take my responsibility seriously, I'm not going to just vote someone to just randomly sign something, um, tonight without making sure that we do it correctly.
Yes, the, uh, uh, and the, the missing, from what I understand, documents of Joe Hart, and he's been in touch with HUD, is that what it, what is missing is, uh, either the Board or, uh, the, the Chairman, uh, giving the okay for somebody else to, uh, sign the paperwork, that's, uh, that's my understanding of what it.
Right, that's incorrect, as I said again, I'm reading directly from the message. Flag number one, it was not filled out fully commit, complete, it didn't clearly state the determination. Second, our office questioned that the person who signed it had the authority to do so normally, the RE in the town would be normally the Chair of the Board. So there were two things, not one, two. So it's not just a matter of us voting at, on Selectman Watson, I'm trying to be respectful, to just let you sign it again, it's, has not been filled out correctly, so we need to look into this, um, and, and correct it, and make sure what, that what we're doing is done correctly, so that, I don't have a problem letting, voting any member of my Board to sign it, once I know that's been filled out correctly, but right now, I don't have enough understanding of this tonight, to even begin to know.
Well, why don't we put this, uh, why don't we put this off to the next meeting, get the, uh, the Executive Director in here to, uh, just explain, uh, what needs to be done? And, uh, what's, what's the thirtieth?
So.
That was a budget meeting.
We were going to not have public.
Yeah.
Interaction at the next few meetings.
Let's, let's push it off, but I would also like to ask this Board if they would vote to ask, um, the HUD, Ryan Cusack, that he would release to us all emails that he has received on this subject to us by vote of our Board on our letterhead as a public information request, so that we can understand everything that, we may not have seen other messages that have gone back and forth, and, because we're not part of the Housing Authority, we need to see everything. But I need the Board to vote that request.
I'm okay with that request, I'd like to see all that too.
Did you make a motion, Kathy?
I'm making a motion that we request from Ryan Cusack at HUD, a copy of all communications with the Town of Groveland regarding this, um, environmental assessment checklist.
Are you talking to the Town of Groveland, or are you talking to Groveland Housing Authority?
Oh, the, everybody involved in this, please, however you have to word it.
Okay.
Yeah, just so that I can.
So just all, just emails or emails and documents?
All emails, documents, letters, whatever.
All communications pertaining to this issue?
Yes.
Is that, okay.
Yes.
Okay, um, anything else on that?
Well, do we have a motion and a second to get a vote on it?
Um, any further discussion? Bill?
Yes, um, as, uh, opposed to bring Mr. Cusack or whoever it is, why don't we ask the Housing Authority to come in and explain why they haven't been able to complete their, their, I don't know what.
Responsibility, paperwork?
Responsibilities, that's a great word. Responsibilities to, to fulfill this, this paperwork that needs to get done. I mean, I don't know what Mr. Husek, Cusack can.
Well, he's asking us to be the RE.
Mr. Cusack is HUD.
He's HUD.
Right, but he, he, I don't think he knows the answer why the, the elected Board has not fulfilled their obligation to, to these requirements.
Right, I think, I think Ed alluded earlier to bringing Joe Hart, the Executive Director, in versus Mr. Cusack. I just wanted to clarify that I think he was mentioning bringing Joe Hart in to discuss it.
Sure, he would, uh, he, he would know, he could, he could give a rundown, what happened?
I mean, you could certainly ask the Housing Authority as well, but I think we, if we request these documents, again, I don't know that we should be bringing the public in, I will honestly say, I think if you bring the Housing Authority here, residents at the Housing Authority may want to attend that meeting.
Well, maybe we can start with a review of the documents before we ask anybody to.
Right, so that you're not, we're not bringing public into the.
And we're not wasting anybody's time.
So I can certainly request this, and I do know, um, Ryan Cusack did say to me, if the Board votes, it's all covered under the Freedom of Information Act, so he would release whatever is requested.
Good start, um, Mike?
I think the other issue that I'm having trouble gripping is that we would not know any of this was taking place, uh, if it didn't get kicked back to the Town for incompleteness or wrong signature or whatever the issue was. And that's troubling to me because, uh, we all have Selectman time for a reason, to inform the other members of the Board what we're individually working on, the meetings we're working with, uh, as far as people and the content of those meetings. So we try to be as open and fluent as the, the meetings that we're, we're doing in the role of a Selectman, um, but I, I, I don't recall in the last year or two this conversation coming up, or this meeting, or this signature, or anything like this taking place, which would have begged the question as to how we came to this point.
Well, if you look.
Am I the only one that's concerned that I would not?
If you look at the August fifth, uh, two thousand and nineteen minutes under Selectman's time, I, I noted that I assisted the Housing Authority in the paperwork.
So that was.
August fifth.
Six months ago, and nothing was men, mentioned after that?
I just, uh, that was the last, that was the last I heard up until, um, probably two months ago.
But on the documents, it was signed February twelfth, eleventh?
Yeah, up until that time.
Twenty twenty.
Up until that time.
Why wasn't it?
You know, that this, uh, this all could have been handled just perfectly if the Chairman of the Board at the time had done his job and done the online exam. What it boils down to is, he failed to do his job, he failed to assist another department that needed assistance, and that, and that's why we're in this mess. So I stepped up to the plate, and, uh, I, again, I had told, uh, the Housing Authority I couldn't do it because I wasn't the Chairman, I was, uh, I was the, uh, Vice Chairman at the time, because Bill Dunn was the Chairman, but, uh, this was in July, the middle of July, when I was asked about it, they got back to me, I, uh, I took the exam on the twenty-ninth of, uh, June, uh, uh, July, and the next meeting, I noted that I assisted them in, in doing that. So, uh, so when, when the, uh, the Chairman of the time said, "What happens if I don't do it?" When, if it, well, what happened is, somebody else had to step up and do the job that he should have been doing. And he failed to do his job, and somebody else had to do it, and that's, and that's what happened. Okay, any, anything else?
Yeah, point of clarification, so I guess, might understand that any elected body, board person that does not do their job that they ran for and they were elected for automatically becomes our responsibility, is that, is that the gist of what you're saying?
No, the gist, the gist of what I'm saying is that the, um, the HUD, uh, required the, members of the Housing Authority to take the online exam, and also the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. That came, that, that, that came from HUD, and that was noted in our, uh, paperwork on October fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
I do not believe that's true, I believe that the request for the Chairman to complete the online training was specifically due to the inability of anyone on the Housing Board to do their job, that's why it came and rested on this Board, because they could not get anyone on that Board to complete their responsibilities for which they ran for. That's how it happened, it wasn't a both, it was, "They won't do this, I cannot get them to do this," and since I've had conversations with Mr. Hart, so it falls on you, because they don't want to do the job that they're elected for. So it seems to me that, that the, you, you're trying to pass the baton, uh, away from the folks that we entrusted and elected to do the job.
Well, they.
So that's odd, but okay.
They did do the online exam.
Then, then you shouldn't have had to do it if they did it, because as I recall, it wasn't, uh, uh, a both had to do it, it was, they failed to do it, so in, therefore you have to do it.
Well, how about, how about looking at it a different way? I wouldn't have had to do it if you had done your job when you were the Chairman, then I wouldn't have had to step up and do it. But the Housing Authority, my understanding is, had to, had to do the online exam along with the Chairman of the Board. And if we get, when we get Mr. Hart in here, he can clarify that, uh, with, uh, probably with his paperwork. So, uh, we'll see if we can get him in here at, uh, where do you want to put that off to? We got, uh, the, uh, three thirty and four six is, uh, just budget meetings. They'll put it into the, uh, just before Town Meeting.
If we're opening to the public again, yes. So I, I mean, I would say we'll hold off on scheduling him until we, for further notice.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get, we should be able to get that, uh, well, uh, yeah, we got another, we got over a month. Okay, um, next, go ahead, you have something?
Yes, I wanted to ask, um, you signed this on February eleventh, two thousand and twenty, but you said you took the exam, the online course, in July.
That's correct.
Okay, um, who filled out these, these forms with the numbers and the letters?
Uh, that would, would have been, um, the Executive Director, I assume it would be.
Okay.
I didn't fill that out.
Okay, that's what I wanted, okay, so this is my concern. Um, the Board of Selectmen, my understanding, again, new to the Board, reading through the minutes, talking to this person at the HUD level, is that we are the responsible entity on this at this time, at this point, that's not changing. We, um, have to be able to know that it's been filled in correctly before we just sign it, because it just got kicked back because it wasn't filled in, the source of the documentation wasn't filled in, this wasn't done correctly, so.
Well, that would be a question that.
Even though you signed it and you shouldn't have, the first reason it was sent back was it wasn't done.
Well, let's find out from the Executive Director, uh, what is, uh, what needs to be corrected on that, and, uh.
Well, I'm just surprised that they would put us in a position to sign on something that we know very little about and then not do it correctly, so I guess.
It was, it was my understanding. It was my understanding that, based upon what is email here to Denise, I think we all have it, I have attached the environmental review that I had signed, that Ed Watson had signed previously. I will lose federal grants for the housing authority's capital project if this issue is not resolved. So to me, federal grants for the housing authority capital project sounds like a money article to me, Bill. Ed Watson took the online training that HUD required. If the chairman or other selectmen wanted to take the training and be the responsible entity for HUD-funded project, that's fine, but someone needs to do it, or we will not get this money. So he could, he could give a, he could give a rundown on what needs, what else needs to be done. I think it's, my understanding is all of the needs is, is an approval from the selectmen to sign the paperwork. But if you don't believe that that is the case, then we can get that answer from him.
Could we ask that this particular message telling us that all we have to do is sign the form as it exists, can we send this to this Ryan and ask him whether or not he just wants a change of signature? Because I'm not going to sit here and, and go back and forth over a change of signature. My understanding from him in the email that he sent to me is this was first stopped in its tracks because it was not, you can see the blanks in the source of documentation. It's not filled in.
I can ask for clarification on that when I'm requesting the documents, if you'd like.
And Ed, how long did you, did the course or exam take? What, what amount of time does it take? Approximately?
Maybe an hour, a little more, an hour and 15 minutes, maybe.
It's like an online video or something, and then a quiz at the end or something? Okay. Well, I wouldn't mind just being able to see that if I have permission to, for my board members, just to understand what it is we're talking about, because I'd like to understand it better. I can give an hour to do that.
Okay. All right. Do we, we had a motion on Florida, we haven't voted on that?
Yeah.
I still do.
That is correct.
Question?
Go ahead, Mike.
On the, the document, there was a requirement to have a public comment period on this matter. Do you know if that was adhered to?
I don't know.
Okay. The problem with not knowing some of these things is that you're, you're signing a legally binding contract between the Town of Grovanen and HUD. And by authorizing it, you're saying that you complied with everything that this document stated, which, I mean, I do a lot of contracting, so I understand that every piece of this document refers to either a stipulation, or a statute, or something that you're assessing to that you complied with. I think that there's underlying, more underlying issues that we need to work with regarding this type of action. So I think that this would move to executive session. So I would move that we move to executive session regarding this.
Can we first vote on the motion to just get the information?
First vote on the motion.
Sure.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Was the motion, again, has been so long?
The motion was to ask Ryan Cusack at HUD to release all communications pertaining to this issue under the Freedom of Information Act.
Yes.
All in favor? In unanimous. Now, you had something about executive session?
Yeah. I think that this rises to the need for an executive session to talk about what actually transpired with this. So I would, I would move that we move this conversation to an executive session at the earliest convenience.
I'll second that.
Are we trying to go into executive session now, or are you thinking about-
No, we don't have time to do it.
Okay.
You're talking about after you get all the paperwork.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
I'm not sure that it rises to the level of executive session, but we can, we can check on that. Okay, next.
We have a motion in a second.
For future agenda?
All right. Further discussion? None? All in favor? Posed? And maybe we can get clarification on what, what the criteria is for the executive session. Okay. Fiscal year 21 budget discussion and town meeting article discussion. Discuss increase for non-contractual employees.
So if I may, I would recommend tabling this. I think if we're going to dedicate the next two full meetings to budget discussion and town meeting, it does not make as much sense to discuss it tonight. I was hoping to have a draft town meeting warrant, but things are changing so quickly with other things that are zoning matters and easements. And I have not finalized the draft, which I will send to you as soon as it's completed. But I think it might make sense to push it off, unless you have specific questions that you've, that have come up. I did include on all of your places, the water and sewer budget. We got that right after your last meeting. So that is for your budget book. But otherwise, I think that we could dedicate just the next full meeting to-
So I make a motion, we table the fiscal 21 budget discussion, town meeting articles to a more appropriate meeting.
Second?
Second. It's a motion to table, not debatable. All in favor? Yes. Votes of the board. Approve Jeff and Maria's special event common Vic license for the following dates. Wednesday, July 22nd, 2020, from 10:00 p.m. to 3:00 a.m. And Wednesday, August 19th, 2020, from 10:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Because we voted tonight, the emergency declaration, and it didn't have a date that it ends. This is not allowed.
Well-
Under that, well, I'm just saying, we wait till we don't have the declaration.
How about this? I'll make a motion to approve Jeff and Maria's special event common Vic license for the following dates. Wednesday, July 22nd, 2020, from 10:00 p.m. to 3:00 a.m. And Wednesday, August 19th, 2020, from 10:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m., contingent upon the removal of the declaration of emergency.
Emergency declaration. I don't, see, I don't know if we can sign that.
If it's still ongoing, obviously, we can't approve this. But if it, if it's, we have since rescinded it, I see no problem that we couldn't approve it now, contingent upon that.
I don't know.
I mean-
Second that?
Well-
They wouldn't be able to have it regardless, because under the current state and federal guidelines, they can't have gatherings of over 10 or 25 people. So I think even with the state, the current criteria, they couldn't meet unless they, that's all lifted as well.
But by that time, it could be. So, I mean, as opposed to revisiting later on, if we make a motion now and approve it, it's contingent upon that.
So you need a second?
Yes.
Right? Is that where we're at?
Yes.
Seconded.
Second. Further discussion?
Yeah, I, I think that makes sense, as long as, I mean, Denise knows more about the regulations and stuff that we do. Does that fit into both the state and-
Local and federal guidelines?
Yeah. I mean, I think the federal, I don't think it's mandated at 10. That's the recommendation. The state, it's 25. I mean, the state is, you cannot, I mean, weddings are being canceled. So they cannot continue with this if those criteria is still in place, regardless of what this board does.
So yeah, as long as that gives us leeway to either approve it later or, you know, pull out, cancel it.
Well, we're going to vote to approve it contingent, is what we're on it for. So-
Emergency declarations that have been rescinded, this is obviously null and void.
Correct.
Okay. All in favor? Yes. Vote unanimous. Next. Ratification of the police chief's contract from July 1st, 2020, through June, June 30th, 2023.
I move that we ratify the police chief's contract for July 1st, 2020, through June 30th, 2023.
Seconded.
And motion made and seconded. Any discussion? None? All in favor?
Are we supposed to summarize it? Are we supposed to summarize this in public or not?
I think the document's public.
You don't need, they will, it's public information. It will be posted publicly.
Oh, okay. It will be posted. Okay.
All in favor? In unanimous. Ratification of the finance director's contract for July 1st, 2020, through June 30th, 2023.
Motion to ratify the finance director's contract for July 1st, 2020, through June 30th, 2023.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? None? All in favor? In unanimous. Except the resignation of Stephen Collins from the highway department.
So may I comment before you discuss this?
Excuse me?
May I comment before you discuss this?
Sure. As of Thursday, 3/26/2020.
Well, so that has been rescinded.
Has been rescinded.
So-
That's kind of good, right?
So Steve had expressed his intent to resign. He gave us two weeks' notice, and then everything sort of happened over the last few days. He came to see me this morning and stated that he is willing to stay on for a period of time until we either hire a replacement, or until he's ready to sort of move on with things being changed. He's looking to start his own business, and obviously, the climate is not appropriate now for that. I told him I had no problem with that. I didn't know if he wanted to give a more solid deadline. Right now, we've received one resume for his replacement. It could go on months. I don't really know. So he's willing to stay on, continue discussions. I told him I was still putting it before the board, just sort of leaving his resignation open-ended at this point. He didn't want to rescind the whole resignation. But, so that's where it stands.
Can we motion to table this, then?
Sure. I mean, it won't be before the next meeting, so sure.
Motion to table the resignation of Steve Collins from the highway department.
Second.
Second. It's a motion to table, not debatable. All in favor? In unanimous. Correspondence, oh, no. We have finance director.
And I think I just have one clarification. So after our vote on closing all public buildings, I've heard from the police department who feel that the lobby of the police department should not be included in this. They have taken precautions. They have the partition glass, and they've added an additional, I guess, screen almost to protect the whole, the window where you speak through. So they feel they should be exempt, because the public has no other way to access emergency services by walk-in. So they've asked that the police station lobby be exempt from your policy. I told them I would bring it up.
That's a good point. Do we need to make a motion on that?
Yeah, that, that's pretty segmented over there, even with the speaking. So, yeah, they're right. Make a motion to exempt the police department from the previous declaration?
Lobby only?
Lobby only.
Yeah.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
That's all I have.
Selectmen's time and reports. Kathy?
I just wanted to say a quick high five to Denise and the financial team for a great audit report. You know me, I'm pretty geeky about these things. So I did read through it. It's really great. I did have a thought, because we're closing the doors to the public, that while that is going on, and I know you'll still be taking a lot of calls and emails, but perhaps some of these recommendations, you know, that we didn't have time to get to, potentially could be addressed internally. I think there was some, some talk about them, people putting down a framework of their job, what they do, so that if they're absent for a period of time, we would have some documentation on that. I know, I've been given such work from my school. While I'm at home, in addition to running the online classes, they're asking me to, you know, do other things. And I'm glad to do it, glad to do it. So I thought, if you wanted to look through these comments and potentially let us know what you think could be addressed, that would be great. But other than that, really nice, super audit report. Thank you.
So those comments, the problem is with the documentation, we have several employees that have done it until everyone does it. It's not going to come off that audit report. I can certainly put that out, but just as a reminder, employees will not be staying home. They will be in here doing work.
Right.
So if there's free time, I can certainly ask for them to address that. The other issue is the internal controls, or the fraud risk assessment, I'm sorry. And we've put out, I've put out an email the last few years, asking for department heads to provide feedback. They have not been providing feedback. So I need to put together an actual form that department heads can fill out, that they actually have to state fraud risk in their department, and we have to have it documented. So I can certainly do that as well.
So you're taking the lead on that, then? You're going to do the SS?
I am going to. I am going to. On the fraud one, yes.
That was, that was all. I was hoping you would say that. Great. That's it for me.
Bill?
Yes. We had our first meeting of the rec committee in quite a while, last Thursday. A successful meeting. We voted to replace the batting cage cage at the Pines, which was a big thing that has become dangerous now with the boys hitting balls through the netting into the softball field. We are attempting to get the participants that use that cage to share in the cost of it. So I will be reaching out to Babe Ruth, and I will be reaching out to the high school. It's two spots, Greg. Two, two parking spaces. That's all we're asking for, approximately. And that'll take care of the cage. The, we also discussed how we can be, how we can broaden our horizons to be more than just girls' softball and rec basketball. How we can, I've actually challenged the rest of the committee to come up with ideas, is how we can involve more of the town's citizens in our committee activities. How we can involve the elderly, how we can involve, how we can take on more projects, recreation-type projects, beyond what we're doing now. I think there's a tremendous opportunity. I think it was well-received by the committee, and we will be reaching out to other groups, such as the council on aging, to see what they might recommend. I know I've reached out to Denise to see, to talk about things. Maybe we can take off her plate that belong more with the recreation committee. So we're working toward that goal, to expand our footprint on the town, and basically, our visibility in, in what we do. So that was a good thing. The high school building committee meeting was postponed last Tuesday night for several reasons. One was, they had the high school banquet, basketball banquet in the cafeteria. And the other was, they were anticipating a school building committee meeting, which happened, or going to happen tomorrow, or last week, I forget now. And they wanted the high school building committee to follow that school, high school committee meeting.
Yes, school committee meeting.
At that time. They will have, not meetings this week, we will have, will be at the 60% reconciliation point.
Yes. If the meeting goes forward.
I, you know, that was my other point. If the meeting goes forward, the building committee is a rather large group. They may postpone it, they may restrict it. I'm not sure how it's going to go from here on in. We're all in uncharted territory. As soon as I know, I'll make sure to get the word out as, as soon as I know anything about it. And that's it from my committees.
Mike?
Yeah, just one thing. On March 5th, I had a meeting with selectmen Dunn, Senator Tarr, Chief Valentine, Sam Jocelyn, State DEP, Fed EPA, over at Valley Screw. Again, there seems to be a couple avenues that may be open to us. Of course, it's not anything that's going to be quick or easy, but there are a couple of things that we could do with that property. The first step is to get in touch with the owner, get some permission, be able to enter the property and see what we're working with. So Senator Tarr is working on that with, I think, Sam. But there seems to be a couple of ways that we could go with that property, depending on what the town chooses to do with that, would determine the actual length and complexity of taking that route. So just something that we're continuing to work on, and hoping that something will move forward in the next six months or so. I mean, it's government, it's slow. It took me, what, a year and a half to get lines painted on the road out here, so.
And then they dug it up.
And then they dug it up. You know, so it's frustrating, but I, I have a hard time giving up on things. So I am going to continue working at it.
Okay. And, and I don't have anything. That takes care of that.
I just have one question on what, that building. The owner has not paid any taxes, correctly?
Correct.
So would there be, have been money set aside into the overlay for the non-payment of those taxes?
Not, no, because it's in tax title.
Okay, so-
It's in tax title. We just have not foreclosed.
I thought we weren't going to take it, because we don't want the liability, so-
Right. We have not foreclosed. Tax title is different than taking a pro- Tax title is different than taking a property.
Okay, so up to the point when, before it goes into tax title, we are holding in the overlay for the unpaid taxes?
No, because it's in tax title.
It went right to tax title?
It went right to tax, it's been a tax title for 20-something years.
Okay, I was just hoping money had been set aside, that might be able to be, well, the overlay does have money, though, we know that. Okay.
Okay, um, old or unfinished business? Mike, you got anything?
Uh, no.
Bill?
Um, yes. Uh, quick question to Denise, um, seeing as we're on the subject of this board taking on other responsibilities. How's the cable contract coming?
Uh, so, it's, it's in process. Um, Bill Hewig has discussed, sent it and discussed it with, um, Catherine, who came here the night of our public hearing. Um, she stated that she felt our request was very high, um, she would take it back to her side and prepare a counterproposal. He has not gotten that counterproposal yet.
Okay.
So-
Just want to make sure we don't lose cable while we're trying to keep up with this coronavirus stuff.
No, no, not at all.
Uh, Kathy?
No, I don't have any unfinished business, thank you.
Uh, other items not reasonably anticipated at the time of posting? Anybody?
I have none.
Nope.
Uh, correspondence. Executive session minutes from March 9th, 2020. Letter from Chief Valentine regarding a grant the department was awarded for gear washer extractor. Documentation from Laurie Benson, Board of Health Administrative Assistant, to defend salary increase requests. Fiscal year 2019, audit reports, basic financial statements and management letter. Minutes from the March 20th, 2020 meeting.
Mr., uh, Vice Chair?
Go ahead.
May I, uh, I was remiss in, in not mentioning one thing, uh, and I imagine that Denise and Rebecca were heavily involved in this, but, uh, I don't know if you've heard it, the town did receive, um-
Oh.
-$10,000 grant, uh, in order for Municipal American with Disabilities Act, uh, and kudos to, uh, fantastic, uh, Finance Director and our awesome Town Planner for continuing to find money where money can never be found.